Good evening, welcome to the June 19, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Biassadi?
Here.
Commissioner Legasse?
Here.
Commissioner Lethan?
Here.
Commissioner Martin Mason?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Chair Chase?
Here. Commissioner Biassadi, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome. All right, first item on our agenda will be, I'm going to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from...
To the Chair?
May 15. Commissioner Johnson?
I move that we approve the minutes of May 15. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And since I wasn't here, I'll be an abstention. But they do pass. Communications, Israel.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. Unfortunately, your Community Development Director, David Wolltering, was unable to be here this evening, and so he asked me to sit in, in his stead, for the first time. So I apologize in advance if I make any inadvertent missteps or misstatements, but we'll try to keep the meeting moving along. Staff is not aware of any communications at this time. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Is there anybody wishing to, is there anybody from the public wishing to comment on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll open and close that. All right, do we have any conflicts of interest on either of these from the commissioners? Nope. That's closed. All right, let's jump right into it. Number five, 300 Angus Avenue. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Amiu Padiya, Planning Department staff. The applicant is requesting to install a wireless telecommunications facility within the residential zoning district on an existing utility pole located at 300 Angus Avenue. AT&amp;T Wireless and Modus Inc. are the applicant's and Joint Pole Association is the pole owner. Existing wooden pole is located in San Bruno Park 4th Edition Track at the intersection of Mason Avenue and Angus Avenue in front of a single-story church. The subject site is within the residential zoning district, however, it is not located in front of the resident and it is close to the Central Business District. The proposed canister antenna would be mounted on the top of an existing 38 feet, 10 inch tall public utility pole and would measure approximately 23.63 inch tall and 90, 9.45 inch wide. The new antenna would be installed on a 7-feet extension on the existing pole, increasing a total height of the pole by 48 feet, 9 inch. There are no other wireless carriers with equipment installed at this site. A small cell is a low-powered cell site which when grouped with other small cells can provide coverage in areas where traditional micro wireless facilities are discouraged. The applicant has indicated that the proposed small cell will help to close AT&amp;T's significant service coverage gap in this part of the city by the least intrusive means. The proposed design also includes installation of two remote radio units, electric meter, load sensor, and disconnect switch to be mounted to the pole and to be painted to match the existing pole. The applicant has provided alternative site analysis and co-location opportunities. The site analysis is prepared considering the coverage objective for the proposed location. The applicant has investigated eight alternative sites in the area for the placement of a small cell facility. Based on the analysis, the report concludes that the proposed location at 300 Angus Avenue is the best available and least intrusive means by which AT&amp;T can close its significant service gap in the community. The small cellular facility is very low maintenance and is remotely monitored for performance or hardware failure. The applicant has specified that the proposed site will be serviced by AT&amp;T once quarterly basis. The applicant has submitted a radio frequency report as required by the municipal code. The report was prepared by Hammett and Edison using the industry standard analysis. The report indicates that for person anywhere at the ground, the maximum RF exposure level due to the proposed AT&amp;T's operation is .24 percent of the public exposure limit and .41 percent of public exposure limit at the second story, second floor elevation of nearby buildings. The report concludes that the calculated exposure level would not exceed the applicable public exposure limit. In addition, the report also specifies that due to proposed mountain location and height, the antenna would not be accessible to the general public, and so no mitigation measures are necessary to comply with FCC public exposure guideline. However, it is recommended to post an explanatory sign at the antenna. Staff finds that overall design blends in with the existing utility pole and is in compliance with the requirement of the municipal code. Staff sent a legal notice to all the property owners within 300 feet of the subject site on June 8. No comments have been received as of writing this report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question you might.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any questions of staff from the Commissioners? No? Okay. This time I will, I opened it up to the public. Oh, I'm sorry, the applicant. Excuse me, it's been a little while. So is there anybody from the public wishing, oh, I'm sorry, the applicant. Please step forward, thank you, sorry, bear with me.
Hi, my name's Angela Kung with AT&amp;T, is this her? We are here to, we obviously have a proposed site in front of you, we're here to kind of introduce Small Cell, which is one of our newest technologies. It's offloading capacity for macros in our dense urban areas to be able to have more capacity for the larger cells to be able to make sure everybody can get their coverage in this area. We've noticed a significant coverage gap in this area, so this is how we chose the site. We've obviously worked with staff and we have alternative analysis of different sites that we've looked at, and we believe that this is for us the best site. We have had no opposition on the site and we really believe that, working with staff, we've been able to locate a place that we feel that kind of fulfills our gap as well as the coverage need from our constituents and our customers. In general, Small Cell, we're really excited about because the low power as well as the ability to be able to coverage, to close coverage gaps without doing large macros, and we're able to blend in with utility poles as well steel poles on city property. So, we're happy to answer any questions specifically about the site, but I don't know if you have any, so I'm happy to stay here and be able to answer anything that you have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Through the Chair?
Can I hear?
Yes. I do have a few questions. This is my first time having anything like this before me, so I do have, I have some educating I need. So in reviewing the information that you provided us, I see that there are things that are going to be mounted closer to the ground and some things that will be mounted up at the top of the pole, including, it looks like an extension and then, then a, an antenna with a...
At the top, correct. A shroud, yeah.
Okay. So, the materials that are going to be mounted somewhere in the neighborhood of seven feet off the sidewalk, the power meter, I believe, it seems to me as though it can be reached by pedestrians from seven feet off the ground. Is there any safety risk, any risk of electrocution if that were to be tampered with by pedestrians?
No, I'm happy to have Abby actually from Modus who can come talk to you a little bit more about that. But no, a lot of the, and she'll talk to you about the details of it, but a lot of where our boxes are, are due to requirements from PG&E. They need to be able to read the meter and they're for technicians, so they have to be accessible by the technicians. In terms of the lowest box...
Yeah, all the heights are predisposed by PG&E, so it's between seven feet and 18 feet, and that's just a PG&E requirement. Like, they have to be at that height.
So theoretically, PG&E would permit it to be farther up the pole?
No, the power meter has to be at seven feet so that they can reach it and access it.
Okay. Right. I do have a couple more questions, I feel bear with me. If a taller building is going to be built there in the future, would the RF exposure be a problem to a taller building? And in that case, would the gear be relocated?
So, we do actually have Hammett and Edison here to talk about that, if you have any questions about that, but in general, no. In terms of, you're asking if a building was higher than the...
Well, I guess, I guess, I don't know the science behind the radio frequency, but it seems to me that from the percentages on the ground, because I'm assuming it's up high so that it can reach really far, and then on the ground we receive less radio frequency exposure.
So, we have an actual expert, he's the third, he's from Hammett and Edison, if he can kind of talk to you a little bit more about RF.
Good evening, Commissioners. Chairman Chase, my name is Bill Hammett, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. I manage a firm of 20, we're located up in Sonoma, and a regular part of our practice is the calculation or the measurement of radio frequency exposure conditions. To address your question, oh, I should say, we're hired by carriers, by cities, by landlords, our job as engineers is really straightforward. What are the exposure levels and how are they compared to the standard? Your question's a good one. Forty-seven feet is the center of this antenna, which is five stories up. So if you were to build a five-story, take down the church that's right next to it and build a five-story building, the carrier's facility would probably not function well because that would be blocking the signal in that direction. So yes, the carrier is always under an obligation to meet the federal standards, and in this case, it would probably, in the hypothetical case we're creating here, they would want to move it anyway because it's not going to serve their purposes.
I see. I do have a little, a few more questions. But I think this will help for the next round because we're doing this again. I don't know if, well, I'm just going to ask it. Is there, I am assuming that many people who are here to voice concern are concerned about the impact that radio frequency may have on them, and I know that our federal government, I know our federal government has something to say about that as well, but I was wondering if you might be able to share with us, in your expertise, what that would mean for us and for the people who will be around it?
Certainly. And there's a long history here, it's 1996 was the Telecommunications Act, practiced by Congress, that said there will be one exposure standard throughout the country, and no jurisdictions can apply anything tighter than that standard. And I can read you the quote from that law, and I'm sure your city attorney has provided you with information about that as well. So that preempts local jurisdictions, if it complies with the federal standards. So that's the purpose of the exercise that San Bruno requires the applicant to go through, which is to hire someone to certify that indeed it does comply, if it does. And in this case, it certainly does, by a factor 400 times at ground and 250 times at any second-floor elevation. That's 250 times below the standard. And the standard is not built, is not set at a threshold of effects, it's got a 50-time safety factor built into it. So there's some threshold of effects that science has, says, we can talk about the science and how that progressed, but there's some threshold of effects, they put a 50-time safety factor on it, there's another 250-time safety factor below that for anybody at the second floor of any building nearby. Does that help? Would you like me to go into more detail about the standard itself?
I think that does help, I think that the public may have more questions for you than that.
Certainly.
Okay. And then, my last question is, will this make noise?
No, this uses the RU32s and they don't emit any noise.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Commissioners for the applicant? No? Okay.
Actually, I just wanted to go back to staff.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I have a question for staff. In past, we've had things like, stealthing was a concern, and we've had things like fake trees, and there's still quite a few of those around town. Are we changing the standard for stealthing now? Because this is something new for us.
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure, of course. In the past, we've had things like fake trees to hide cellphone towers and stuff like that. Is this a different way of stealthing? Or, because I thought that was a requirement for cell sites.
I believe it's the same style of stilted design. We try to work with applicant to make it more simplified and less equipment, and...
I might be able to answer that one. So, I don't know for exactly your ordinance how to speak to that exactly, but I think what you may be talking about is, in many cases, ordinance has asked us to stealth things for macros. This is actually stealth within the actual light pole, so this is not a PG&E tower, so we matched the tower versus what historically has been a macro, and those are the large towers that you see, and that's why we stealth those with trees, we put them in monopoles or monopines. So it's two different technologies, and this is stealthed in the actual design of the pole.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment, and just go to the podium, state your name for the record, and fire away. And I'm sure that the applicant will be more than happy to answer the questions if we can't.
My name is Leslie, I'm lay, I'm at 149 Acacia. And being at the top of the hill at 149, I will see 161, I will see the tower that's going to be at 123, 101, and it's going to be a five-story pole, is that correct? Because that now becomes my view from my second-floor home. My concern one is, is there any radiation involved with this equipment? The noise level of the equipment? Why has it been chosen on this particular 100 block in the neighborhood?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think...
Too many questions?
I'm sorry, I think that this is, that you're referring to the next item on our agenda. This is for the downtown unit...
Oh, I'm sorry.
On Angus, this is a, this is a different location. We actually have two very similar items on our agenda.
Yeah, it was very confusing when we came in here. We're all here for the same reason. Our neighborhood has been targeted.
So, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may, for, through the Chair and members of the audience, so there are two items on tonight's agenda that are similar, the...
I can use the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, they're just...
But it, you read through the agenda and it covers...
All right, well, we're so sorry, please, please bear with us. As I mentioned before, unfortunately, our Community Development Director was unable to come, and he's usually very good about making sure that there's lots of agenda, so let me just go through that briefly for you. So the first item is 300 Angus Avenue, and that's the proposal that is now before the Planning Commission. So the next item is 123 Elm, and I believe it sounds like that's the item that many of you are here for.
Yes.
So, why don't we go ahead and complete the hearing for 300 Angus? If anybody has anything to say about that, you're welcome to come to the podium and make whatever statement you want, and we'll continue with that public hearing. Close that out and then go to Elm, and we'll let you know when that's coming up. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, are we all, excuse me, are we all clear as to what we're discussing now? 300 Angus?
This is, this is, this is because of a question that someone did ask about, I guess you had asked about the noise, and the response was, there is no noise. No audible noise, but what about the ultrasonic frequencies? Because there are definitely health, you know, health problems with ultrasonic frequencies, and I'm just curious about that.
We will have to ask the engineer, the expert, I suppose, as to, if you could possibly answer that question, I know I'm not the expert on that.
Through the Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Biassadi.
I'll take notes for all these folks' comments, and then we can do them as a group at the end if that works for everybody.
Well, I think it's important to separate the two public hearings.
No, no, I get that, but I mean, for this item, that way the folks can come up and answer, whatever's written.
For 123 Elm, there will be a public hearing, and everyone who's here on that can speak on that matter at that time.
Right.
This is a public hearing for 300 Angus.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may, I just also wanted to point out that the agenda, if there are no more copies, if you have an electronic device that can access the internet, you can go to the city site under Planning Commission, and the entire packet is available there.
Thank you. Okay, so, back to where we were, we're at 300 Angus. Open the public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to answer, ask any questions on that? If not, we're going to close it, okay?
We're going to get that right.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman Chase, Bill Hammett again. Some equipment makes noise because it has fans in it, and as the fans turn, they cut the air, and that's what makes the noise. This equipment does not have fans. It's convectively cooled by the fins that are built into it, and so the natural flow of air going across the fins draws enough heat out. So this particular set of transmitters that AT&amp;T is proposing are indeed silent. There's no, no active air movement forced by fans.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Was there a two-part question on that? I think the...
Oh, yes, she was asked about ultrasound. Again, there's no sound generating device, so there wouldn't be no sound in the audible range, 20 to 20,000 hertz, nor would there be any sound higher than that because there are no moving, no moving parts to, to run the fans.
Very good, thank you for your explanation. Okay, any other questions of the public on this particular item? No? Okay, we're going to bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion or motion or whatever.
And if I may, through the Chair, before the Commission deliberates and makes a motion, the applicant did bring to staff's attention that condition number 14 was inadvertently included in the packet. Condition 14 says the applicant shall enter into a lease agreement with the city. The applicant is not required to enter into a lease agreement with the city because the city does not own the pole. The pole is owned by PG&E. So that, that number 14 can be stricken from the conditions.
Thank you.
Through the Chair?
Commissioner Johnson?
I move that the Planning Commission approve use permit 18-004 based on the findings of facts 1 through 6 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 19, but striking out number 14.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, yes, a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Oppose? No.
So it's five to one, it does pass, and if I'm not mistaken, there will be a 10-day appeal.
That is correct, 10 days to appeal.
Very good. Okay, let's move on to what everybody is here for. Item 5B, this is a request for a conditional use permit to install a wireless telecommunications facility within a residential zoning district on a joint utility pole for sections 12 to 20, 12 to 20.90 of the San Bruno zoning ordinance. Staff report?
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Amiu Padiya, Planning Department staff. The applicant is proposing, requesting to install a wireless telecommunications facility within the residential zoning district on an existing utility pole located at 123 Elm Avenue. Verizon Wireless and the CBR Group are the applicant's and PG&E is the pole owner. The existing wooden pole is located in San Bruno Park 4th Edition Track adjacent to Santa Lucia Avenue in front of the two-story resident at 123 Elm Avenue. The site is surrounded by, by a single-family residence. The proposed canister antenna would be mounted on the top of existing 38 feet, 6 inch existing utility pole and would measure approximately four feet tall and 14.6 feet, inch wide. The applicant also proposes to install 7-feet extension to the existing pole with the screened antennas at the top for a total height of 49 feet, 10 inch. There are no other wireless carriers with equipment installed on this site. The applicant indicates that because of short wavelength of personal communication services, the antennas are required line of sight path for a good propagation, and typically install a distance above ground level. The applicant specifies that the coverage in this neighborhood is currently limited to in-vehicle and on-street with in-building coverage being not adequate, and the proposed antenna at this location would improve in-building coverage in the neighborhood. The proposed design includes installation of two remote radio units and electric meter to be mounted to the existing pole. The proposed antennas, RRUs, electric meter, and support equipments would be painted to match the existing pole. The applicant has specified that there are no equipment proposed that would possibly emit noise. The applicant has provided alternative site analysis and co-location opportunities. The site analysis is prepared considering the coverage objective for the proposed location. Applicant has investigated four other alternative sites in the area for the placement of a small cell facility. Based on the analysis, the report concludes that the proposed location is the best available and least intrusive means by which Verizon can close its significant service coverage gap. The small cellular facility is very low maintenance and is remotely monitored for performance and/or for hardware failure. The applicant has specified that each site has a periodic maintenance inspection that the carrier initiates typically on a monthly basis. These inspections are not invasive and usually consist of technician and a laptop computer. If at some point a piece of equipment fails, a general contractor will replace the failed component involving a maintenance truck and a couple of personnel. Each site is monitored by the carrier 24/7 for the proper operation. The applicant has provided, submitted radio frequency report as required by the municipal code. The report summarizes that the result of RF EME modeling in relation to relevant federal communication commission's RF EME compliance standards for limiting human exposure to RF EME fields. The report indicates that the maximum power density generated by the Verizon antenna for a person anywhere at the ground is approximately 5.70 percent of the FCC's public limit. The radio frequency report is also peer-reviewed by the consultant Hammett and Edison. The peer review report confirms that submitted reports conclusion for exposure level and concludes that the calculated exposure level would not exceed the applicable public exposure limit anywhere at the ground level. In order to alert people assessing the pole, caution signs are recommended for the installation on opposite side of the pole at 11 feet and below the... the pole at 11 feet and below the bottom of the antenna. Staff finds that overall design blends in with the existing utility pole and in compliance with the requirement of municipal code. Staff sent a legal notice to adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the subject site on June 8. Staff has received one comment from property owner of 123 Elm Avenue. Staff has reached out to the residence of 123 Avenue and answered the questions and presented information about the project. In response to neighborhood opposition, the applicant also held a neighborhood, a meeting at the site. The residence of 123 Elm Avenue and four other neighboring neighbors were in attendance at the meeting. For further qualification on the site, explanation on site selection, the applicant has prepared and would like to do PowerPoint presentation for an extended site analysis for the selected location. Next. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you very much. So, do the commissioners have any questions of staff? No? Okay, the applicant, please step forward. Could you state your name and give us a brief explanation of how and why, you know?
Yes, my name is Mark Peters. I'm with the CBR Group. We are the applicant representing Verizon Wireless for this proposal. I will try to keep my statement brief. I know you have probably a lot of questions, and there are a lot of folks here who are going to provide a lot of comment, and I can answer questions as we go, or at any point at which you want to call me back up to answer further questions. I have a lot of information with us. There is a couple of minor clarifications with the staff report. Hammond and Esson didn't do the report for our project, this facility. EBI did the EME report, and we also have another third-party expert here, Dr. Jerry Bushberg, who can speak further to EME. We also, my firm, as well as Verizon, uses Hammond and Edison as a third-party report. They just weren't used on this particular project. There are a lot of questions that get asked of these facilities, and this, our facility, whereas in scale and scope is very similar to the, the previous item that you heard tonight. There are some differences, especially when, in regards to siding, and we get a lot of questions about that. And a couple of quick questions, which I'll touch on first, are why here? Why, why are we putting the facility there? And is it safe? As far as the question of why are we putting the facility where it is, Verizon network engineers have a responsibility to design their network to operate in the best possible way, and to provide service to their customers as they deem fit, and they're allowed to do so by the California Public Utilities Commission. And, and I think if you had some questions beyond their rights to use the public right-of-way, and as a general rule, where they can go, your city attorney and staff can probably help with some of those questions. The more specific about which pole we selected, for, for my firm, as the, as the applicant, we do the development for this location, and we have a search area that we look in, and we have the ability to move and have discretion about, about a 500-foot radius around the coverage objective by Verizon Wireless. So within that 500-foot coverage objective that my firm looks at, we try to pick the best possible site. I have an alternative siding analysis here tonight that will help expand on that. In your staff report, we have a smaller version of this that, that reflects a few of the nearby poles. We, because we expected a lot of, you know, community voices here tonight, we wanted to go the extra step and show the, the whole environment that we chose from, why we made the selections that we made. And I'll try to, and it's pretty long. It's actually 33 pages, and I know you probably don't want to hear it really long, but I think it's an important part, because under the law, under telecom law, you can't effectively prohibit Verizon from putting wireless facilities where they need to place them, but you do have choice in the time, place, and manner, as well as some aesthetic decisions. So we want to display to you that we made the best possible selection, given the objective, and within that siding decision, we, we chose the most aesthetically pleasing design that, that we have available to us. Mind you, that we are using telecom equipment, and it is not always the most, you know, eye-pleasing equipment available. With that being said, I can briefly go through slide two. Do we have a button here? Here we go. So I'll skip over some of the boilerplate about what this report does, and really get to show you. The red circle is the search area, and I hope you guys can see that over there. I have some printed copies, if commissioners would like to look more closely. Every single structure in the right-of-way, by structure, I mean wood utility pole, street light, vertical asset that's in the right-of-way, inside that red circle, we put a pushpin over, and we've numbered those. And as we go through, we can show you from our proposed facility, which is right here. And you can see that the pole has a fair amount of screening over what we call the substructure space. That's where the equipment area goes, from the tree nearby. And as you go through all these other potential locations, within that 500 feet, there are no street lights available. There's just, there's only, most of the street lighting is provided on wood joint utility poles. So all of these are wood utility poles. And out of this, we have alternative number one. As you can see, this is in the same siding situation as the site that we selected. It doesn't have a tree near it, so from our siding perspective, we chose one with a little better screening. And we also have a, a preference for the center of, of our objective area, if there's no better solution outside of it. And certainly, when we look for these locations, we would prefer to be in a commercial district first. We, there's no commercial district within our coverage objective here. We would like to be behind homes or next to open space. As you'll see through this, this is dense residential within this area, so there are no open space areas. And we would like to be in backyards and inside yards as a point of preference as we get to the front of homes. As you'll see, in this particular alternative, it is in the same siding perspective as our proposed location, and there's really no meaningful difference or no better option here for screening or for siding than our proposed location. Alternative number two is a pole that is also sited in front of a residential home, but this particular one, because of the, the arrangement on the pole, it doesn't meet General Order 95, Rule 94, which says you have to maintain certain climbing space. We would have to put our equipment on the outside, the street side of the pole, which PG&E doesn't support. So we couldn't use this particular pole, even if we were in a better siding condition. Alternative number three, once again, is in, and you'll see this is a common theme in this neighborhood, that there are many poles directly in front of residential homes, and this one has no screening or no trees around it, so it would be a little more visually intrusive, and it's farther from our search center. Alternative number four, no meaningful difference, once again, in front of homes. And I don't want to be repetitive about this, but I do want to make the point that we've, we have looked at every single available option. This one, again, is in a similar siding perspective, and there's no meaningful difference. Alternative number six, no meaningful difference in front of homes. Alternative number seven, in front of homes. Alternative eight. This particular, you can see the arrangement of the pole has quite a bit of stuff on it. Because of that, there's no available space on the upper portion of the pole, and due to CPUC and PG&E regulations, we can't go on this location. There, this, once again, is in front of homes. It doesn't provide a better solution than where we're proposed. Alternative number 10, this pole has no meaningful difference. It's in front of homes, once again. And as we go through, no meaningful difference, no meaningful difference, no meaningful difference. This one is on a corner, and potentially might be a better location, but because, as you see, there are two F arms on top of the pole due to GEO 95 and the arrangement of the pole, we can't utilize that pole. This pole also, we looked at very closely, because it, it's a little bit farther away from homes. There is not sufficient climbing space on here. That could be corrected if we put a taller pole in. This still sits in front of two residential homes, and it would be very subjective to determine whether or not it would be a better location than our proposed location. It's also at the outside of our search objective, on the outside ring. So if there's not viewed to be a significant improvement, we would prefer to be towards the center. This one, again, no meaningful difference. This one, no meaningful difference, and also it would be less screening around it. This one, the arrangement of the pole precludes us going on it for 18. For 19, no meaningful difference, no meaningful difference, no meaningful difference, and there has some GEO 95 issues. No meaningful difference, no meaningful difference, no meaningful difference. This one has cutouts on the pole. PG&E won't allow us to go. It's a safety measure that's on the pole. And that's it. And then, as comparison, I know there was a question that was asked early tonight on another item about macro sites and stealthing. These facilities are designed to get into places where traditionally ordinances have precluded wireless facilities from being built. Obviously, you can see, these are the other types of facilities. When people say, "What are the alternatives?" Well, this is a macro facility on the picture on the left, and you guys are used to seeing these. You can see them from the freeways and stuff like that. You know, our alternative to put, you know, to provide service in a residential area would be to put something like that in, instead of a small cell, which I think everybody would agree that that is not a better solution for providing service in these areas. Please reserve your questions, and I'd be happy to answer them later, just for procedure.
We'll come back to the public comment. You can ask your question then. Go ahead, continue, please.
Thank you. The other question is, you know, are these facilities safe? We have somebody here, we had, you heard one answer about EME. We can provide some additional comment to that. If you have more questions about EME exposure, the facility as designed will comply. Verizon and AT&amp;T and other carriers are required by the FCC to have all their facilities in compliance with EME laws. The other question that gets asked quite a bit is all, are the, you know, is adding this equipment going to make the pole fall over? We do structural analysis, my firm does. We also, PG&E also, because we're going to be at the, at the pole top with our antenna, does their own structural analysis. So there are two structural analyses on the pole, and, and to determine that it's safe, and that our equipment isn't going to exceed the loading capacities of the pole. And if you were to ask me, generally, I would say because of our projects and the scrutiny that gets applied to them between this forum, PG&E's review, that they are probably end up being safer than a lot of the poles that haven't been looked at for 50 years that are owned by PG&E and AT&amp;T. And then to sort of wrap this up without going on too, too long, we've met with the, the residents, a part of the staff mentioned that we arranged, actually, the residents during, for the public noticing that was sent out by the city, contacted us, asked us, my company, to come out and meet with them, answer some of their questions, talk about their issues. We met with seven or eight, six or eight folks that lived nearby, and we did our best to answer all their questions as best we could. And as part of that, one of the questions that came up was aesthetics, and we have boiled this down, this site down, from three radio units and a ground amount of battery backup. We've taken those components, some of those components out, to be down to the very minimum of two radios, an antenna, an electric meter, and electric safety disconnect, which is really the, the minimum amount of equipment for the facility to operate on. There are some aesthetic options that we have, that we are proposing to do that are not in the current plan that you have, which are some fiberglass covers that go between the radios to help conceal some of the cabling, and certainly, as a condition of approval, we would be happy to, you know, accept that or provide additional information to you about those covers. They, they weren't including the original submittal, because they're sort of new that have come out and that Verizon has been working on literally in the last, you know, six to eight weeks. That's all the statement I had. I'm happy to answer questions.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
I would definitely be interested in seeing those new options, if you have them.
Well, yeah, we do. You know, unfortunately, we have one photo of one site where they've been installed in Palo Alto, and we don't like to widely publish it, because Palo Alto is its own utility, so there's no electric meter, so the arrangement is a little bit different, and there's no electric meter on that. But, but they're, they are the same size and the same width as the RU units, and they just make a cover piece to go between two of the RUs. It's small. Your, the chair's question earlier, I think, or, or maybe Chairman Bessetti's question earlier about stealthing, one thing that we like to also point out when we talk about how to make these look better, oftentimes you say, "Well, can you put a cover around it to make it look better?" One of the things that we found over the last two years of doing these facilities, is when you put something around it, it gets bigger and provides for a bigger silhouette, and it really isn't a better aesthetic solution. These smaller covers help keep it trim, and as trim as possible to the silhouette of the pole, and we think are probably the best aesthetic solution that we've come across yet.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Again, this is, I'm, I'm new to this, so I do have lots of questions, and I imagine that they're shared by the, by the public as well. Bear with me here. It sounds as though previously, when you first made your inquiry with the, with the city, staff talked with you, and you had originally proposed a power cabinet?
Yes.
And it has since been eliminated by the staff's recommendation?
That's correct.
And, so there will be no box on the ground, as indicated in, in previous drawings?
That's correct.
Okay. And I, I understand, when I was reviewing this, I was thinking about if this was right in front of my house, and how it'd feel with my kids, and how it'd feel about my property value, and my view, and my, my primary concern would be about the radio frequency. So I would like you to, to touch on that, but...
Okay. I can have Dr. Bushberg come up and speak about that whenever you're ready.
Okay. In just a moment. But I want you, while I have you. So I do want to discuss that, but what do you do for coverage in areas that don't have power poles, like Hillsborough and other?
So there are a lot of programs. Your city has been approached by Verizon to, to place facilities on city-owned assets. By city-owned assets, I really mean streetlights. And there are some cities that also offer their traffic signals as locations. Obviously, if there's no vertical infrastructure, there, there is nothing to put an antenna on, and they try to, you know, the, the carrier tries to find other solutions to, to those problems. And, and really, it takes something to put the antenna on. And in some cases, the carriers propose, you know, new infrastructure, like macro facilities. You know, if you're going to build a brand-new pole someplace, typically, that's on private property, slightly different process than the public right-of-way, but that's the short answer to your question. You, you'd also mentioned a question about, you know, I'm not sure if it was really a question, but I'd like to respond to it, about, you know, if this were in front of my house, and if this were in front. So these are coming in my neighborhood, too. I, I can tell you that I'm advocating, actually, to have the battery backup put on it. One of the things that small cells will do is help provide connectivity in emergencies. And I know the first thing that, if, if we were here tonight and we had a big earthquake, the first thing I would be doing would be texting my son, who's home alone. He's 13, but, you know, old enough to be by himself, but I'd want to make sure he was okay if we had a big earthquake, and he needed to get out of the house if the gas line was broken and all other stuff. And it, the first thing that happens usually in natural disasters is his power gets lost. We've taken that battery backup off this facility as part of the aesthetic improvement of it. The point that I'm trying to make, though, is that these facilities help decentralize the wireless networks. They help add capacity. They provide additional resources and broadband access for first responders, as well as city services that might be a commercial subscriber to Verizon, or, or might be another care, AT&amp;T. There's an interoperability mandate by the FCC a few years ago that says everybody's facilities have to take any mobile's calls through E911. So you might be a T-Mobile customer, and if the small cell were in your neighborhood, and you placed a 911 call on your cellphone, and you didn't have T-Mobile coverage, the Verizon small cell or anybody else's wireless facility would route that call to the closest PS app. So those things do, they do provide community benefit even above and beyond service directly to the Verizon customers.
Okay, thank you. A little, a few more questions. As an alternative, would, would there be any other sites, or had you considered putting a macro tower but farther away outside of this residential area that would still bring the coverage that you were looking for?
So, so there are macro facilities that are outside the coverage area, that are in the city of San Bruno today, and that serve those areas now. And, and without having a whiteboard, and my staff probably laugh, because I use a whiteboard a lot when I talk, I could probably draw you a diagram that kind of helps explain it. Cellular sites, the antennas on cellular sites are directional, and they face a certain direction. On any given sector is what we call those. You can kind of have a maximum number of radios, and that's one radio for every frequency that the carrier has spectrum for. So that macro site, let's say it's down on El Camino, and there's some, there's a few down there, that projects up towards these residential, residential areas, can face one sector up into the residential area. into the residential area. These residential areas that you have that we're proposing small cells in, if you were to look at them back from where the macros, imagine a searchlight looking out that direction, they might see several thousand homes. One sector can't really handle at high-capacity demands that many users. So there's nothing really more that you can do, and it's really, without getting into, you know, very complicated layer management, by layer management, I talk about the air interface between macro sites and facilities. You can't just stack up macro sites pointing in the same direction. It doesn't work to interfere with each other. So this is, with small cells, you know, as a technology and as a form factor, have been introduced in why AT&amp;T was here tonight. Verizon, you know, we're here tonight for Verizon. These are, we have multiple proposals in your city that we've submitted to staff already, and they, that helps address that underserved capacity demand within these areas, as well as not just today's technology, the facilities that we're proposing now are, will operate 4G. This is also the infrastructure step towards 5G and 5G services, which you guys might have heard or read about in the news, especially recently with the T-Mobile merger. I don't know, was that a...
I think that covered my, yeah, my question.
Okay. Because I could go on.
The macro's not going to work, and there's, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. At this point, then?
Do you want to have Dr. Bushberg speak to the exposure?
Absolutely.
I think that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gerald Bushberg, and I'm a clinical professor of radiology and radiation oncology at the University of California, Davis. I'm here just as an individual, a private consultant, to provide some guidance on the health and safety issues related to RF energy. So to answer your question, I think, you had asked, well, you know, how would you feel if the pole's in front of your house, and, you know, from a safety perspective, I think was what you were referring to. And so let me answer that two ways. So I answer it as a father first and then as a scientist, okay? So as a father, you know, my kids are really young. They put a cell site right by my, my littlest daughter's preschool. And, you know, and the parents were, you know, they were concerned about having it there because there was a lot of stuff on the internet about having radio waves, radio frequency radiation. And so what I told them is what I would tell you, which was that from all the evidence that we have to date, those extremely low levels of RF energy do not pose a health hazard of any sort to the children or to humans in general. We've been living with exposures to RF energy and been studying its biological effects now for over five decades, and we've been living with wireless technology, which people see as new, but really is not new. You know, the radio has been with us for decades and decades, of course, and the wireless technology that we see today is really just a combination of three very old existing technologies. It's a combination of the radio and the computer and the mobile phone, and the technology that we use with our mobile telephony. And the combination of those three together provide our wireless services, but they're all very familiar technologies that have been used for a very long time. They're just being combined in a way that gives us a kind of wireless access that brings new, brings new uses to the technology. So what I tried to tell them at the, what I did tell them at the meeting was, when they were concerned about it, is I went over some of the science, but more importantly, I said that the benefit is that if there is a problem, if there's a fire, if there's a earthquake, if there's a, some other disaster, having this facility here will increase the probability that we'll be able to summon aid for someone that has a wireless phone. This is a while back when not everybody had wireless phones, so it was just an extra layer of safety and protection. And I said, so, you know, as a father, my overall feeling was that my anxiety level sort of went down and my level of comfort went up by having this facility here. I saw it as an extra safety, layer of safety for everyone at the preschool, the teachers and the kids. So on the scientific perspective, I said, I would say that, that, you know, of all of the things that we study in science, there are no absolutes, and no one can come up here and say that we know everything about everything. And that's true of every physical or chemical agent that we use in a modern society. But having said that, we know more about the biological effects of radio frequency energy than virtually everything else except maybe ionizing radiation. And I think part of the confusion is that people hear the word radio frequency then radiation, and they hear the radiation word, and they associate it with things like X-rays and atomic bombs, stuff like that, and it's not like that at all. It's just part of a spectrum of energy, just like visible light from these fluorescent is also visible electromagnetic radiation. We don't call it that. We call it light bulbs, you know, but, but it's electromagnetic radiation at energies much higher than radio waves that we use for wireless communication, but we just call it light, and it's very familiar to us, and so we don't really worry about it, but it is electromagnetic radiation. So these radio waves are far below the energies and completely different in their types of interactions than, than X-rays or the kinds of ionizing radiation that we try to limit exposure to and that we use in medicine. And so the biological effects and some of the concerns, I think, are due to the misunderstanding and often the confusion between the two types of energy and their differences and interactions and potential harmful effects. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
That's very helpful to me. Thank you.
That was very good. Helpful to me, too. Any other questions from the commissioners? No? Okay. Well, then, at this time, I guess I will open it up to the public, and if you would give us a chance, we'll, whatever questions you have, you know, we'll write them all down, and then we'll see if we can't get them all answered. So please, just step to the podium, state your name for the record, and ask your questions if you have any.
Thank you, Chair Chason. As the first speaker is, is walking up to the podium, just a reminder, as you indicated, it would be easiest if the, we'll keep track, my request that staff do that, the applicant do that as well, of all the questions, ask whatever questions you want, make whatever statement you want. We'll keep track of those, and then we'll have the appropriate individuals try to answer all of those questions at the end. And if we forget to answer any questions, please, somebody let us, let us know. And if for any reason we can't get you the answer tonight, then we'll, we'll figure out what to do about that. So we'll, we'll take down all the questions, have all the speakers come, and then we'll, we'll have the, indicate who's going to answer those.
Great. Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
Okay. So Mike Brainey, I live on Elm Avenue. So I noticed in the agenda handout here, there was one particular item I want to bring to attention. It's number four. It's one of the bold items. General appearance of proposed building structure grounds will be keeping with the character of the neighborhood and will not be detrimental to the orderly, harmonious development of the city. And this is the part, and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood. So if you do a little research, you'll find that the American Home Appraisers Association, National Real Estate Associations, all have done studies and found that wherever there are cell towers in neighborhoods, the properties near those locations are 15% to 20% less valued, less desirable. People don't want to move into a house that's sitting on top of a cell tower. Just something to, for you guys to consider. The doctor over there was talking about exposure and radiation and all that. It's a fact that continued exposure to RF radiation from cell towers cause adverse health impact, health impacts, excuse me, such as cancer and leukemia, and that children are the most susceptible to these dangers of such adverse health impacts due to continuous low-level exposure, something that you people do, your due diligence considering this. Earlier, you were talking about, you know, abatement issue with the other first gentleman, and you were talking about safety and health of the neighborhood, of the city. Well, it's up to you to keep that in mind before you make your decision to approve these towers in our neighborhoods, because there is health concerns, health issues related to RF, EMF, all that exposure. It may not happen today. The guidelines that FCC uses for regulating human exposure is actually at high levels that, to the point of heating human tissue and, and all that good, just like a microwave oven works. That's where there, if you look in the guidelines, you can find that information, but it doesn't talk about low-level and continuous long-term effects. And that's back, and these are based on 1992 guidelines, is what FCC is still using today. So it's old, outdated. Let's see, what else was I going to say? Oh, there's numerous case studies and articles detailing cancer clusters in vicinities around cell towers. There was recently a lawsuit in New York. It was the Incorporated Village of Bayville, the school district, versus Nextel of New York. And if you look at that case history, if you look at the case, if you go online and research it, they talk about an increase of 398% of cancer in that area, in that vicinity. I mean, these were larger towers, and, and there was 50 antennas in this area right next to a, a school. So consider that when you, when you approve this. It seems to me that the first one, you just kind of wrote off that Angus address, and it didn't, there wasn't much deliberation, and you people are making a split decision here tonight where you should do your homework. Seriously.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner, Chair Chase, I actually forgot to announce that each speaker has three minutes, and because I'm, I'm new at this, I forgot to ask our staff person to turn on the timer. So he's going to start doing that now, and everyone will have...
Three minutes, start now. I think he goes along.
Right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
That was terrible.
I can speak.
Please state your name.
Elaine Tripsa, 152 Acacia Avenue. The discussion was in the purpose of the towers for better reception. I'd like to state that I am a Verizon cellphone user. I have no problems at all, and especially that my home is built with steel, which would have greater interference, and I don't have any. So the excuse that it will provide us better service, I am sorry, that is not valid for me. The gentleman prior quoted also 1992, the FCC. No studies have been made, and we are staying back in the 90s what we knew then. However, we know more now, but all the studies are inconclusive, basically, because there aren't any for the long-term cumulative effect. And I'd like to say that radiation that are constantly rained upon us on a daily, hourly, continuous basis, you get the cumulative effect, and it does hurt us. I know this. I'm a cancer survivor. Three months ago, I finished radiation. Every day for five weeks, I've been radiated, and I don't need to have continuous radiation on top of me, because, you know what? I didn't get a single dose because it works better when you get it little bit at a time and kill the cells little bit at a time, and I don't want that. I'm at home every day, 24 hours, seven. I'm in my backyard. I have a second-story home. That's where my bedroom is, and I don't want to be receiving radiation given at those frequencies with the use that I, that I'm already a Verizon subscriber, that I will have a better service. I have no problem with my service, and I'm very happy. Thank you. So we need to do our due diligence because we don't have enough support, we don't have enough resources, we go by what the communications provides for us, and I'm sorry with the professor. I respect him. He's happier. Just in case we have an earthquake, I have no problems. I went through 1989 in this home. I've been living in this home since 1985, and I went through 1989. That was a large earthquake. I have no problem going through another one without the 5G and without having the radiation rained upon me continuously. I need also to state that the fire department hasn't excluded themselves that no tower would be posted on any fire department because the firemen that provide us service are getting problems, and they have excluded, and no antenna will be in their premises or near. I want the same for us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Unfortunately, your time is up, but your statement is definitely welcome. Thank you. Congratulations on being a survivor.
Heidi Beck, Heidi Beck, 160 Acacia. I have a question, just because I, you know, heard the, one of the speakers, one of the applicants mention the telecommunications law. Do you really have any power to even deny these poles? That's kind of wondering if this is like all kind of a joke for us to be making public comment that, you know, it's like we're powerless. Is that the case? That's one of my questions. Another one of my questions is, okay, so Verizon, you know, wants to put up a pole. What if, you know, AT&amp;T says, you know, "Hey, we need to put up a pole, you know, two blocks away." You know, how, when does this stop? How many poles go up in this neighborhood, especially if they say with this 5G that we're going to need more? So I'm curious, how many, you know, how many more poles are we going to get? As far as trying to make these things less unsightly, oh my God, you know, it's like a five-story pole. It is horrible. There are some in Millbrae. You know, I drive to work, I go up through Millbrae to go up to 280 to go, to go to work, and there are some of these towers in Millbrae, and you can see them from, you know, far distances away. They are so frickin' ugly. It's unbelievable. And, you know, there's no way you can hide a five-foot pole, I mean, a five-story pole. They're, and, you know, up in these, springing up in the residential neighborhoods, this is going to look awful. So I'm wondering what can be done to mitigate this because it's, it's horrible. And, yeah, I guess that's really what I'm concerned about, like, you know, A, is this really all just a joke that we, you know, we can complain about it all we want, but you're going to have to repot stamp it anyway? And B, you know, as these things proliferate, what can we do? Is there anything we can do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zedon Millie. I live on 161 Acacia Avenue. I'm also Sergeant San Bruno Police Explorer, and this is my little brother, Zachary Millie, who's at, who's 10 years old. So I would just like to make a quick point that was said a little earlier. I would like to emphasize the safety hazard about the radiation because you said, or the experts said, it was like at a, like a small dose, but to me, it seems like, it's like a snowball effect. So the small dose is eventually going to get bigger and bigger, and so will, like, you know, the, the risk is going to just get bigger and increase. So, and I always play outside with my little brother. You know, we play football, soccer, everything, and I don't want to, like, be outside, and I don't want my brother to feel uncomfortable when we're playing. So, and I, and I'm just like worried about my little brother about, you know, the cancer and how you brought up the point about radiation and cancer, and I just don't want my brother to be at risk, especially with cancer, because that's, that's no joke. And I, if I lose my little brother, like, you have no idea. And if, if I lose my brother because Verizon makes this, then I'm coming after Verizon. I'm going to sue you guys for a lot of money. And so, and you guys, the experts point out the positives, like, you know, better reception and how they have to come here and do all that, you know, they have to put the, the radiation stuff there, but I don't really think you guys take in serious consideration the safety hazard. So I just want to clearly state that I ask you guys, the commissioners, to just seriously take in consideration the, the safety hazard before you make your choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leslie Amlay, and I'm from 149 Acacia, and I'd like to add to some of the comments. I have a number of friends who are actively involved in keeping these towers out of the Samatéo area, Baywood, Samatéo Park. We have problems there because I have one of the residents in that area. We have problems there, because I have one of residents in that area with communication. But in this area in San Bruno, I have no issues, I have AT&amp;T. But I know this much about radiation, the 4G that they're studying now, and you mentioned 4G, seems to be not a non-issue, but it's the 5G that's the issue. It's the constant being overpowered by this equipment. The American Medical Association has questioned the validity of this product not producing, not producing cancer in people. I too am a cancer survivor, and I know what radiation does, and I have been understud, you know, I've been working with UCSF for five years now. And radiation will give you lung cancer, radiation will kill you. And I'd like to know that the study and the dosages of the radiation are thoroughly examined by this board, so we understand what the chances are of our children, of our healthy people, and of those of us who have been ill and affected by this terrible disease called cancer. I'd like to know that you study that and really understand what the side effects, long-term side effects are for our entire community. That's your obligation, is to us. And I hope you take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Brian Shea. I live on officially 888 San Lucia, but 90% of my house is on Elm. I'm four houses away from where the tower is gonna be. Now, and I apologize for interrupting the speaker, but my point was, gonna get to you, is have you ever considered those tower, the big light standards we have in the park, no homes are around, and you can put the antenna on one of them, not in front of someone's home? It should cover, I'm an AT&amp;T, I have no problem in my area at all. But I think that you could consider moving the antenna to somewhere that, and you said it goes five stories high, so you'd only have to add on, I'm assuming yours is the one that's five stories higher, was that, are they both the same?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And just, just on the cancer and all that, you know, you already know that they thought Johnson &amp; Johnson baby powder wasn't ever gonna hurt nobody, they thought Roundup was never gonna hurt anybody. They're in lawsuits now, so you gotta look down the road and say, hey, you know, wake up and, you know, and see what happens. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Julia Larson, and I live at 123 Elm Avenue in San Bruno. And when I first heard about the plans of Verizon to place this structure atop of an existing utility pole in front of my house, I was really surprised and very upset, because I had already heard so much about the damage in a variety of arenas that can be caused by these things placed in neighborhoods. You've heard about the radiation. Certainly, if the FCC says that it's okay, well, it must be okay. I think we all know that this is really not the case, it has never been the case through past things that have come down health-wise that weren't considered. I was, I was the one basically who requested the meeting at my home at the site of the proposed tower last week. I requested it of Mr. Peters from CBR and one of his associates. And during that meeting, we received an abundance of very well-thought-out, good information. However, one thing that I thought was curious was that I mentioned about these scientific studies that had been done, and the expression I used was, the jury was still out on whether or not these things were harmful. And Mr. Peters told me that, well, you know, we know that cigarettes cause many health problems, because basically the jury came in, they found out through all of their, you know what?
No, continue.
Found out through all of their research that these things were cancer-causing. But when my parents were smoking in their 20s, they thought it was fine. It was something that pretty much everybody did. It's the long term that we have no clue about with the 5G. No clue. And that is why the jury is still out, and it will probably be out for quite some time. That's one thing. Secondly, the Board of Realtors across the country has noted, as a gentleman had already said, a significant drop in property value around those towers. My house is in front, I mean, this tower is in front of my living room window and my upstairs bedroom window, where I take care of my two grandchildren three days a week. I've got property value, lack thereof, and health issues staring me right in the face every single day. Now, I know through my research that, you know what? You guys, with all due respect, you are somewhat powerless. If the FCC says that it's okay, and if Verizon meets all of the guidelines and everything that they propose seems to be, you know, fine and dandy, then I do recognize the fact that regardless of how you may feel personally, there is little you can do about Verizon or any other provider placing towers in neighborhoods. However, I do know that sites can be altered. Mr. Peters, they may not be the perfect sites. Maybe Verizon wouldn't have the perfect site, but if it is going to make a $300,000 difference in the value of my home and my neighbor's homes, if it is going to make a difference in the quality of life of all of us who have lived in San Bruno, which I have for 36 years, I think that so what for the 5G being a little bit less effective? We're talking about human beings. We're talking about life savings. We count on our homes for our retirement purposes. When we first buy homes, very typically, it's as a savings account.
You know...
I realize I've gone over...
Yes, you have, and it's okay.
I, I thank you very, very, very much, but I just had to say everything, because aesthetics, everything has to be taken into consideration here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay. I think we have a few questions probably to get answered here.
Yes, so if I may through the chair, summarize the questions we have. I think I count four categories of questions. The first one that was raised was the effect on property values. The second one raised by a number of different speakers had to do with the radiation exposure, and especially 5G. The third category of questions had to do with what is the city really able to do? I'll be happy to address that when the other speakers are finished. And then the last category of questions had to do with location, can't it be in the park or somewhere else? So I think we'll, we'll have the first question, the second question, and the last question for the applicant, and then I'll deal with the question about what can the city really do.
Beautiful, thank you.
I noted down, if you wanted, maybe four questions, so I'm gonna try to go through these, and it might be a little bit redundant, because I took notes on each speaker, and I wanna let the commissioner that we take the community opinion very seriously, and we do our best to work within it, and also address their concerns. The first gentleman brought up property values, and I'd like to address that, and a couple other people talked about property values. If you go online and Google research on it, you'll find whatever you're looking for. I am happy if you wanted to continue the hearing to a date certain, and allow me to provide you with reports that show that there are no significant effects on property values, and in some cases, there is an increase in property values. There's one done right here in Silicon Valley, it's a pretty famous one, that shows that there was no detrimental effect to property values, in some cases, there was an increase in property values. Now, the, an individual realtor can give you individualized results for a home. If somebody thinks that their home will be devalued by $300,000 for a wireless facility around it, I bet you there is, we live in the Bay Area, and everybody knows what home prices are like, I doubt you will ever see any discounting of 20% to a home price based on almost any condition, much less a wireless facility. Younger buyers actually request walkthroughs in a lot of homes to find out what the signal strength is. Younger buyers generally have a preference for access to wireless broadband. With that being said, what I'm trying to answer is that there is a lot of studies about property values and the effects of wireless facilities on property values, and I can provide probably as many studies as are referenced here tonight that show the contrary with what they want. I don't know if that's any value to you or not, but I can certainly provide those. The next question was about EME, and then I'll have Dr. Bushberg talk, you know, a bit more, he's far more qualified than I am. I think that also your city attorney can advise you, there were some questions about the legalities of what you guys can and can't answer. What I also wanna say is there is some law about that with EMEs, but we are also committed to providing to you the best outside third-party counsel to answer your residents' concerns about EME, as well as your concerns about that, and Jerry can talk in just a second. There was a couple of comments about, I have Verizon, and my phone works fine at my house. So one of the things that we talk about is coverage, another thing that we talk about is capacity, and then the third thing that we talk about is the future, we talk about, you know, wireless service. Coverage generally is in reference to voice calling, and oftentimes, the macro facilities provide a fairly ubiquitous layer. But the problem with those macro facilities, and I kind of alluded to earlier, is the amount of users that can, that can get on it. When there are significant events, that capacity gets consumed by users, and you can have an accessibility problem. Accessibility means a user could pick up the phone during a high-capacity time and not actually be able to make a call, or have to make repeated attempts at making a call. In the middle of the day, or even, you know, at high-traffic times, right now, you might be able to make a call successfully in a variety of areas, but that may not be the case in a high-capacity situation. That's, that's one aspect of coverage. Capacity also has two components to it. That's the number of users that can get on the system, and then is also the speed at which they access it. Some of the people that are speaking here tonight, I don't know what their particular user profiles are like, how they use their mobile devices. More and more people are using significantly more data on their devices, and small cells are a big part of robust data. There's a lot of great statistics, Cisco puts out a report about every two years, and they, they updated, 52% of households in the country no longer have a landline, they're mobile only, so that's a majority of homes in the United States, that's not just the Bay Area, we're a technology-forward area, that's across the nation. There's an average of 13 devices, connected wireless devices in every home in America now. This is out of a Cisco report you can find online. That data adds stress to the network, and there's a continuing increase in infrastructure that's needed to keep up with those data demands. Cisco projects that over the next five years, there's gonna be a sevenfold increase in data use. So if that were, if we were not to upgrade the wireless facilities at all, you would start having accessibility problems at some point in the future, as demand continues to increase for data, infrastructure's not built to support it. And then in the, then we talk about the future, and this ties into the 4G and 5G questions. Their facilities we build today, this is vital infrastructure, much like other vital infrastructure we had. Back in the late 80s or early 90s, when the first cellphones were out, you probably wouldn't consider them vital infrastructure, that they were luxury items. Today, just about every single person has a mobile phone, and it has, and our mobile phones are handheld computers, and they provide us access to things that the government now sees as vital to our lives. And there's a large initiative by the FCC to make sure that everyone has access to wireless broadband. That's also part of why these facilities are being built, to address future demand and access for everybody to wireless. As part of the 4G or 5G question, 4G means fourth-generation wireless service, and it means different things to different carriers. For Verizon, it refers to LTE service. If you see the little LTE sign on your phones, the LTE stands for Long-Term Evolution, it's just a name for the framework that the system operates on. 3G, if you're with AT&amp;T, was UMTS service, and again, it has nothing to do with the frequency, has nothing to do with the power output, has to do with the way the information is sent via radio waves. For Verizon, it was CDMA, it was 3G. 5G is yet to be labeled, probably will be on the LTE framework. It will be used on the same frequencies that they have today, or new frequencies that the government's setting aside, because there's a long explanation of why the current frequencies they use can't carry gigabit per second speeds, which is what 5G benchmark is supposed to be. Right now, we have a benchmark of about anywhere from 10 to 20 megabits per second. The target is almost a hundredfold that for 5G as far as data speeds go, and that's what 5G references. There are higher frequencies, I can let you, let Jerry talk about the differences in frequency, but how they have an effect, and really, frequency is, I'll let him talk about Let's see, there was a mention about the fire department, and that they don't have facilities, the fire department lobby in California is quite strong. The facilities that were part of their lobby to not have on their facilities were macro facilities, which are different than small-cell facilities we have now, and there was more to that than just EME radiation. It had to do with access to firehouses for maintenance workers, and a lot of other stuff, but I do want to acknowledge that that is a fact, and there are wireless facilities on fire stations all over California today, there are just no new ones going in from the fire lobby. Colocation was another question that came up. By colocation was, can another carrier go on this facility that we have proposed? There are two ways to answer that, there's like the, an absolute answer and a practical answer. The absolute answer is, there's no reason why, you know, yes, another carrier could go on it. The practical answer is, no, they couldn't, because there's just not enough space on the pole. There's no specific reason that says they can't, other than that these are small poles, and the California Public Utilities Commission has significant amounts of guidelines, which anybody can look up, they call General Order 95, that govern how a variety of utilities place their equipment on the poles. And as a result of that, you'll find that it's almost impossible to put two wireless carriers on, on one pole. I'm not sure of a situation where you could actually do it. The wireless carriers have to have separation between their antennas, there's no way to really... There's no way to really do that with the designs that we have. So the answer on colocation is really no, that one carrier's going to utilize one pole, and that would be it. There was a question about why are the light standards in the park not used? It's a little bit of a complicated question. So for one, this one facility that we have proposed for you tonight is not the final overall proposal for small cells in the city of San Bruno. If we were talking about one site, and we needed one solution to it that was on private property, Verizon may look at that one way. This small cell is part of what's referred to as a polygon, which is a number of small cells that are interoperable. They hand off to each other. They're in development. We have nine proposals in with the city today. There are more that are planned. Some are actually proposed by Verizon on city-owned infrastructure, but Verizon and the city have not come to an agreement to utilize that infrastructure as of yet. And those projects are not obviously submitted to the city, or really have even fully been developed. What I'm trying to get to with that is that the sites are designed to work together, and one macro solution doesn't solve all the small-cell requirements for Verizon's network plan in San Bruno. Additionally, there's probably some reference I should make to the fact that those are on private property. City-owned private property, and the city would have to come into an agreement on that. And then we would have to go through the same public forum as this to go on those light standards. Whereas Verizon, as a public utility provider in California, with, it's a CBC and certificate holder, has the right to go on infrastructure in the public right-of-way as a right, and they don't have to lease that. They're members, owner-members of the Northern California Joint Pole Association, and/or if they were coming to agreement with the city of San Bruno to access the public right-of-way. That's another part of the reason why macro facilities on parks are not being looked at as part of this project. And a final comment before I let Jerry talk about, Julia, I forgot your last name, the lady who lives at 123 Elm Street? Oh, thank you. I'll get, let me get to that in just a second. Infrastructure, we understand that infrastructure, vital infrastructure, is not equitable in its distribution, right? We need to put the facility somewhere. It will impact somebody more than somebody else as there's not a facility that we're proposing in front of every single person's home in San Bruno. We're sensitive to it, and I wish that there were a better solution, but these are the solutions that we have for us today. And this technology is something that is moving on a year by year, and Verizon cannot wait two or three years for maybe some other different potential solution. They have to upgrade their network as they see fit. The, there's also another question that I think that you had there. There's a couple of mentions of five-story high towers. I'd like to also just remind you that we are going on an existing utility pole. Verizon is a telephone company, and selling telephone equipment to provide telephone service on telephone poles. So these are existing pieces of infrastructure. We're not proposing adding a new 50-foot tower somewhere. Only a six-foot extension as required by PG&E to keep our antenna a safety clearance above the lines. And if you have any questions for me, I can have you take this now, or I can have Dr. Buschberg talk about EME a little more.
I wanted to get clarifications. I guess you misunderstood my call-up. Any questions?
Okay.
Heidi Beckman, 60 Acacia. Yeah, my colocation question. I didn't mean that companies would have it on the same pole. I was just wondering, like, how, you know, how many companies, how many poles? Or you mentioned your polygon, saying that the poles have to be, these units have to be so, a certain distance. So I'm kind of wondering, like, how will they proliferate in the neighborhood? Where would, if you put one at 123 Elm, where would the next closest one be? Or like, if you have one there, you know, like, where would maybe AT&amp;T start putting theirs? And how close are they going to be together? That's what I meant.
Okay, I understand your question a little better, and I can provide an answer to that. I can't answer for AT&amp;T. What I can say is, there are four wireless carriers that operate in Northern California. Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Sprint. You guys probably seen the news that T-Mobile and Sprint are talking about consolidating, but it's yet to be approved by the government. That means that there are three or four wireless carriers that know how you count them today. Verizon's network plan, small cells have an area of effect. I mean, they provide service at about 1,000-foot radius. And some of the questions, when we talk about, like, the 500-foot circle of objective, is because the facility serves about 1,000 feet. And then there's a neighbor facility that will interrupt it, that needs to touch it in coverage. If we move beyond about 500 feet in the middle of that, we would get too close to one side, too close to another proposed facility. So to answer your question, Verizon's network overlay plan is a small cell about every 1,000 to 1,500, 2,000 feet. That's, you know, in miles, that's about, you know, quarter to half-mile apart for small cells. I can't talk to you about specific numbers with other carriers, although I can say that some are similar and some are different, just from our experience in the marketplace.
Thank you. Okay, so I answered a certain amount of the questions, but I do believe the doctor might address some of the other ones?
Jerry Buschberg. So I think there were a number of questions, and I'll respond to the ones I think had the most similarity between them. And then if you have more specific questions, I'd be happy to address those. So there were some questions that were related to whether there had been any long-term studies and whether the standards were dealt just with heating or whether they protected against, you know, long-term effects. And so first of all, the thing to understand about the public exposure standard is that it assumes that the public is exposed 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So that the level that they determine as safe is a level, as was previously said during the AT&amp;T hearing, is not set between the demarcation of a hazard and safety. In fact, it's set 50 times below a level that is thought to be potentially harmful. And that 50 times safety factor is built in as part of the precautionary principle into the standard. And then the maximum exposures here are 100 times less than that. So we have a wide, wide margin of safety. And the public exposure standard itself was devised with the understanding that there could be situations where that maximum public-allowed exposure could be continuous all the time. So it anticipated that continuous exposure. It wasn't assumed that it would be a short-term exposure. Also, the way the standards are developed, they aren't developed with a biological endpoint already presumed. They're developed in a classical toxicology fashion where a whole series of tests are done to look at all potential biological effects. If you look at, for example, the report done by the National Council on Radiation Protection and Measurements in Washington, if you look at the table of contents in that report, you'll see a chapter that reviews the carcinogenic potential of RF energy. You see a chapter that looks at teratogenesis, effects on unborn fetus. You'll see a chapter that looks on neurobehavioral effects, and on, and on, and on. And so it looks at a wide range of potential. Yes, there is a chapter that looked at heating as one of a number of potential adverse effects. So they're all reviewed as they are for any potential hazard, any hazardous substance or potentially hazardous substance. So all of those areas are, in fact, reviewed. One other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was that for those people that are concerned about RF energy, that want to minimize their RF exposure, one of the things that, this may seem counterintuitive, I think, to some people, but the vast majority of, if you have a cellphone, or you're with people that have cellphones, when you actually use a cellphone and you don't have good coverage in your area, you're, the most exposure you actually get is when you're actually using that cellphone or when you're standing next to somebody that's using the cellphone. And the cellphones have something called adaptive power control, which, and you know those little bars you see when you have really good coverage or when you don't have such good coverage? Well, that, the cell sites talk to the phone. And when the signal is weak because there's not good coverage, it tells the phone to turn up its power to maximum. And the difference in your exposure between when the cellphone is at its maximum and when it has good coverage and you see all the bars and it's transmitting at its minimum, is can be as much as 1,000 to 1 in terms of your exposure. And so while it seems somewhat counterintuitive, the best way to reduce your exposure, if you have a cellphone or around people with cellphones, is to have good coverage in your neighborhood so that your phone is always operating at the four or five-bar level, and it's ramped down to its lowest output level. And it has two benefits from your perspective. One is, your exposure is dramatically reduced. And two is, your battery will last, you know, a month, much, much longer. Those of you that have had the unfortunate experience of leaving your phone on when you're in an airplane, have found that your battery is drained very quickly because it can't connect to the cell system. So it is trying to, it's ramped up to its maximum power trying to make that connection. And the battery, the phone will be very warm when you go to get it, you know, from your luggage, or from your purse, or from your briefcase. And the reason is, is that it is transmitted at its maximum power trying to make that connection. So those are some of the comments that I wanted to make. The other question that's come up, a lot of times that you hear this, the observation that, you know, we thought cigarette smoking was okay. We thought baby powder was okay, and now we find. And that's a, it's a fair statement that science isn't perfect, and that we learn things in the future that we didn't know before. That's the nature of scientific discovery. But as I said earlier, you know, we've been studying biological effects of RF energy now for longer than we've been studying virtually any other physical or chemical agent with the exception of X-rays, which again, I think, we're confused many times during the discussion. I am so sorry for the individual that has cancer, is recovering from that. It's a horrible disease, and I know that it is a very difficult process. Yes? Well, I have experienced this disease in my family, so I am well aware of how devastating it is.
So I'm sorry, if I may, members of the public, we don't want to get into a back-and-forth with the speaker. He's answering some questions, and we should accord him the same respect that all members of the public were accorded when they spoke as well. So if we could just let him finish.
The three-minute rule.
We'll do that. So the three-minute rule applies to members of the public who are making public comments. And we always turn the timer off when either the staff, or the applicant, or others are answering questions, and that's what they're doing now, is answering the questions that you posed. And when this gentleman is finished, I just have a couple of comments to make, answering one of the other speaker's questions as well. So hopefully, we can get through that quickly and then finish up.
So I'll close with this observation. It's one of the things that makes, you know, you can use that as an example. But one of the things that Sir Richard Dahl, who is the epidemiologist, that made some of the earliest and most definitive discoveries about the relationship between cigarette smoking and lung cancer, was he looked at the epidemiology that showed there was a significant increase in lung cancer among those individuals who were smoking cigarettes. And that was, in those days, lung cancer was a relatively rare disease. And he looked at population studies and correlated those with the individuals who have been smoking the most and smoking the longest. Well, when you do that with people using wireless technology, it is more difficult to do because it's really hard to, for people to remember how long they've been using their cellphone, and how close it was, and so forth. But what you can, and those studies have been largely negative, but they're complicated because of this lack of information about how long and how close. But what you can do, what Sir Richard Dahl also did with cigarettes, is you can look at the time-trend studies of a particular disease like brain cancer, lung cancer, liver cancer, and ask the question, well, since the technology has been deployed in the environment and given some latency period for any cancer to develop, have the rates increased or decreased since it's been introduced into the society? And since wireless technology has been introduced, the overall cancer rates have not increased. And in particular, brain cancer rates have not increased. And there has been plenty of time for the purported increases that people say that they might have expected to have been seen, both in the United States and even more so in Europe. And they have not been demonstrated. And so in the absence of any evidence demonstrating an increase in brain cancers, one cannot make that association. So it is, it's one thing to speculate, it's another thing to have the evidence to demonstrate. And that has not been the case.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may just make a couple of comments. I know there was a question about what can the city really do? And are we just wasting our time talking here? So let me, let me point out just a couple of things that were in the written staff report. Not everybody might have gotten a chance to look at it. The last speaker from the public, the lady at 123 Elm Street, is absolutely correct that the federal government has made things very difficult for cities. And the reason why that members of the public and you are having such a difficult time in this particular hearing is because the federal government has told all cities across the United States that there are three things that cities can't do with respect to these applications. And the first thing they can't do is deny an application if the RF exposure limit has been shown to be below the federal guidelines. And that's, you know, made clear in the staff report. So the second thing the cities can't do is allow one carrier and not another one. That's not an issue in this case, but I just wanted to mention it just to be sure. So if Verizon leaves today, and you deny theirs, and then tomorrow AT&amp;T comes in and they have the same application, you can't say yes to them and no to the other people for a substantially similar application. So those are two things. The third thing you can't do is effectively prohibit the carrier from offering the service. Well, what does that actually mean? What's an example of that? And an example of that would be that if you said, denied this particular application, and then Verizon came back and said, well, we'd like to locate on one of our other alternative places. At that hearing, in theory, members of the public would come, and the individual or individuals who live in that house would come and say, I don't want the facility in front of my house. So you would deny that application as well, perhaps. Then the next time, some, Verizon comes in and says, how about that alternative number seven? Or any number of those other alternatives. And if you were to deny all of those alternatives because members of the public or individuals who were affected by property values, as they say, would come in and convince you otherwise, then you would effectively be denying service. And what the federal government says is that you can't do that. So what can you do? And the state, and through the Public Utilities Commission, also doesn't make it easy for cities. And what the Public Utilities Commission says is that if you own a pole, if a utility like PG&E owns a pole, owns a pole, the city has to let these facilities locate on those poles. Unless they're one of a number of findings that you make, and let me talk about those. So the first thing is, you get to force the carrier to prove that there are no alternative sites available. And so the staff and the carrier has worked to provide you with the alternative site analysis that you saw in the PowerPoint presentation. And you can look at it, and you can draw your own conclusions about whether there are or are not alternative sites available. Keeping in mind that if you say no to this one, you can't say no to all the other sites either because that would be a prohibition that the federal government says you can't do. The other thing that the state says you can do is regulate the aesthetics of the design. And again, you saw in the staff report that staff has worked with Verizon to make the design as small and take up the least amount of volume and as aesthetically pleasing as possible. So you can take that evidence into consideration if you'd like. The third thing state law says you can do is regulate the time, place, and manner of the construction. So that's obviously very limited, and, but that is something that staff does do is to make sure that the construction of the facility does not have any more of a negative impact on the neighborhood than is absolutely necessary. The state also says you can require a use permit, and that's what this proceeding is. So for a residential area, you're trying to decide, should you allow a use permit? And state law says you And state law says you can do that. In other circumstances, the, the state says you can't even, you can't even have a public hearing about use permits. So some of these applications are required to be granted almost as a matter of right by, by staff. So that puts the city, all of these rules from the federal government and the state puts all of you and the city and the decision makers in a very difficult dilemma. So one way out of that dilemma might be to say, well, let's deny applications on PG&E poles and instead let's make them, put them on our poles, on city-owned poles, let's say light poles for example, or on other public facilities. Well, that creates a dilemma as well because the problem with that is many of those poles are in residential areas as well. So all you're really doing is transferring the problem from one pole to, to another one. So if the city were to say, well, you can put them on city light poles, you know, maybe the, the traffic light on, on Sneethe and El Camino, let's say, but you can't put them anywhere else in residential areas, then what you're doing is effectively prohibiting the, the service, which the federal government says you can't do. So these are all the dilemmas that cities across the nation face when trying to decide how to, how to handle these, these very difficult situations where there are obviously strong feelings by, by members of the, of the public. So, so that's the outline of, of what the law is, the federal law, the state law, and what the city can do. And you can make a decision to either approve the application or to deny the application or to continue it if you choose. Decision to approve or deny has to be made by using substantial evidence in the record. So it's up to you what evidence you decide to credit or discredit tonight that you've heard. You might credit the evidence of a physician and discredit somebody else's. You might credit their evidence that was compelling to you and discredit other evidence you've heard. But it has to be substantial on one side or the other for you to make that, that decision. So that, that's what the law says. I, I hope that's helpful.
Thank you very much, pretty much, yeah. Okay, so, gonna close public hearing for now because we've already asked all the questions. So that's gonna close. However, I'm gonna bring it back to commission for additional questions of the applicant, if there are any. Is there any more questions? No, not the public, I'm sorry, for commissioners. Nope? Okay, well then.
Yeah, I do, I do have some questions. The first one is about the, the location on light poles. I, I understood that there was a, that it was not the, an optimal solution because it would affect the network of cells that you're proposing to, to put, which if I understood Mark's information correctly, a number of those nine proposals will be automatically granted, providing they, they meet the regulations because we have no say over those. So we're not gonna see nine proposals, right?
We're not going to see, I'm sorry, what kind of proposals?
I understood that this, this particular small cell was just one part of the project and there were nine total proposals that were designed to work together and that, you know, the, 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 the location of those various poles or small, small cell towers were contingent on one another, but not all nine of these are going to come in front of the planning commission, is that correct?
Yes, yes, they are actually.
Oh, they are?
I'm, I'm sorry to, to interrupt the, the applicant. So the, yes, I'm sorry if anything I said made that unclear. So any facility like this in a residential area by our ordinance and as allowed by state law will come to you for an individualized determination in exactly this kind of hearing.
But not all nine were in residential areas?
Let me, I, I think I can answer your question. So we have submitted nine projects. Every, your ordinance and your, your attorney slash staff could, could help you, guide you on what your ordinance is. As I understand your ordinance, we have to bring before you every proposal that we have and it's judged, you as commissioners judge it on its merits. We have nine that we have submitted to staff. This is the first one that's come to commission before you. We wanted to bring one first instead of having multiples. We're not trying to hide anything. It's just easier to get a lot of your community response for, for, for you as commissioners to become educated if, if we talk about one facility first. And, and then there will be follow-ups that, that you will hear from us. All nine of those are on wooden utility poles. The reason why those are all on wooden utility poles and we don't have any on city-owned streetlights is because Verizon and the city would have to come into a, a, a lease agreement for, to go on those locations. And as of yet, as of yet, that hasn't happened. There, there are talks. Verizon has approached the city, it's gone back and forth a few times. I think it's with the city manager's office. At some point, it would go to the city council for ratification if they come to an agreement. And as soon as that happens, my company then would move forward with the development steps that we go through to site facilities on those poles. And then you piggybacked, I think, on that, you said, well, they would be automatically approved. You have choice in this and something that maybe was not said is I could, you know, where people in, in your residence say, well, is this a done deal because you have, your hands are tied as commissioners? They are not. Our responsibility as the applicant is to put together a good proposal, right? I, I could easily bring you a very bad proposal, which would be very easy for you to deny. And then my client would probably fire me for it because they pay us to do a good job and to bring you proposals that are, are based in merit, that we have done our due diligence in our site selection. We know that not everybody will always be happy with what we have proposed, but, but our, our, our client expects us and my, hold my staff accountable to making sure that we do our due diligence with, to make sure that we are in compliance with. And there's a lot of statutes and regulations that we have to go through that I didn't even talk about with you guys tonight. It takes about a year before you even get it to your city, of stuff that we have to go through that with PG&E, with the state of California, with EME regulations. And we do a lot of due diligence before you even see it. So when you see this facility and people ask you, you know, well, is this a done deal? Your hands are tied, you can't do anything. You know, from, from my perspective, if we've made a good decision on our, our site location, given the requirements that our client has asked us to provide a facility within and that we're in accordance with the law and we're in accordance with federal regulations, we're in accordance with state regulations, and we're in accordance with your ordinances, then, then you should be able to approve it. And, and we've done our job to make sure that we've, you know, done all the necessary due diligence for a good proposal and that extends to aesthetics as well. We could have certainly proposed three antennas, 15 radios, ground cabinets, bollards up and down the street, which are all things that, that would, you know, allow you to deny the project.
So this is good news because that means that this project is actually a, a chance to grasp the, the, the whole scope in, in our minds and, and set sort of a precedent for how we want to, to handle these, these related projects in this particular case. So I would like to request then that when considering alternatives, that city-owned properties that would be, that could be suitable be considered as well as PG&E and other utility poles because then if, if there, it's not possible to, to reach a suitable agreement, then that's a reason to reject that, that alternative. But right now, we don't have any information on any alternatives in that case.
I can, I can answer your question. I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
I just wanted to let you know that within the alternative analysis that I showed you tonight, and again, I have copies and emailed to your staff, it was like we expanded it to include every above-ground structure. There are no freestanding light poles in our coverage objective for this particular facility. Future proposals may have those conditions that you refer to where there might be some city-owned assets and we could discuss, you know, the, the appropriate siding selection in those cases. In this particular case, there are no other alternative above-ground structures other than the wood utility poles within our coverage objective.
So the ones that were mentioned in the nearby park were not within that radius then?
Those are on private, for one, private property. Verizon is deploying its small cells through its right as a public utility to the California Public Utility Commission utilizing the public right-of-way. So that, the facility in the park, for one, I can tell you, for what Verizon is trying to do or their network plan, it is not practical to try to utilize those private structures that are randomly scattered, not in the density that is necessary for their small cell network. So the public right-of-way has sufficient vertical structures for that purpose. And, and we would include, if there were private structures and you asked me to include them in our alternative analysis and provide feedback on that, we would. In this particular case in our coverage objective, those are, those standards are well outside of our coverage objective here and that's why they weren't included in the alternative analysis.
Okay, understood then. I, I will however, I, for, for the record, I do request that for future projects where such sites exist in the, in the required radius, that they be considered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Understood.
And, let's see, where's my other question? You seem to have one? Okay, go ahead, I, I'm trying to.
Through the chair?
Yeah, thank you. Please, go ahead.
So my first is actually just a comment to staff. If in the future we do receive these cell tower or something similar, if it would be possible to take them together, because I feel like we're, we're actually spending a lot more time on the second one due to the amount of public comment that we've received. And I feel like it's a little unfair to the first one. So just in the future, if it is possible to take them as an item together and then take action separately, just for purposes of discussion.
Yeah, so we could certainly consider that. The reason why we didn't do it that way is they are separate items and each applicant is entitled to individual consideration in those applications. And the, the danger of mixing those items is that the planning commission would use information about one item to make a decision about another, another item on the agenda that may or may not be relevant to that particular item. So that's the reason why they were separated and probably should remain so for public hearing purposes and for the record.
Okay, I understand. The first question is, just specifically to the applicant, is have you been denied one of these applications or a cell tower application?
Yes, they have been denied.
Okay.
In, in other areas. And by denied, you know, I, I don't think that we have any standing denials. Usually goes to appeal. We don't have any that have been effectively prohibited. We, we work really hard, we just have to try to find the best solution before we go before a body for decision-making. And there have been some denials where they've, we've been asked to come back and answer more questions where we didn't do a good job in the hearing. And then we have some open of those. I don't have any standing denials on any projects. We have one, a couple on, on appeal.
Thank you. My next question is, in 2011, the San Mateo Civil Grand Jury had a report entitled Cell Towers: Public Opposition and Revenue Sources. In their conclusion, they specifically state that the county and cities need to balance public desire for improved wireless reception with local concerns regarding health, aesthetics, and property values while recognizing the rights of service providers under federal law. They continue to conclude that county and cities which have cell towers located on public property should establish lease agreements with service providers to generate revenue to the general fund. My question is to staff, the response that San Bruno gave to this finding was that San Bruno does in fact have some cell towers on public property. So my question is that where are they and are we receiving any revenue from those?
That's a great question. The answer is yes, the city has about half a dozen and I don't have them all in mind off the top of my head, I'm sorry about that. There are lease agreements in place for all of those. They are regularly monitored by staff in the finance department as well as myself to make sure that market rent is being collected for all of those facilities. There is one, there are actually two on top of the fire station. There is one on a water tower, there's one on Lyons Field, and there's a couple of others which, I'm sorry, I don't recall. But they, they all have what are essentially market rate leases for the type and nature of those facilities.
Great, thank you. My next question is in regards to number four, page five of 11 in regards to character and whether the addition of the facility really meets the character of the neighborhood. And my question is more so I think to staff to ask you, is this a subjective standard? Page five of 11, and it's at the very bottom, and specifically it says, specifically the random would be painted to match the existing utility pole, thereby masking and blending the proposed facility with the existing utility pole in a manner that would render it as minimally visible and in, and as unobstrusive as possible. So the question is, is that a subjective standard? So can, can someone say, it's almost, I feel like saying that by, by being, by having a pole there anyway, it's already part of the neighborhood. And I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, but so adding another five feet to it just makes it part of the neighborhood also? So my question is, is that a subjective standard?
Well, let me, if I may, let me take a stab at that because there is a question in, I think what you're asking is, is it a subjective standard as opposed to an objective standard? And an objective standard would be something, for example, like the RF standard, which says if it's below a certain amount, then it's below a certain amount.
Correct.
So there's really no discretion that you have to, to determine that it isn't when, when it is. So in this situation, yes, it is a subjective standard, but the discretion of the planning commission has to be informed by what's called substantial evidence in the record. So the answer really is that it's subjective, but it's, it can't be arbitrary. So if the evidence in the record shows that the applicant did, provided the best design that's possible under current technology, that staff vetted that design, they looked at alternatives, and there's sufficient evidence for you to conclude that it's, it's the best that there currently is, then you might ask yourself the question, is there any substantial evidence that, that it isn't? And then you have to look at what the other side is. So I think that's probably the best way to answer it, is you, you can, you can use your own discretion, but that discretion should not be exercised in an arbitrary manner.
Okay, and my understanding from the 2011 Civil Grand Jury report is at that time there were 450 cell towers in San Mateo County, that was a couple of years ago. Do we know how many are in San Bruno now?
I do not. It's important to, to note, I think, the distinction is I think the applicant has made between cell towers and the small cell facilities that is in the, the subject of the application that's in front of you. I don't, I don't have that information.
Okay. And then my last question is, you did make a, you stated under the federal regulations that there's, that you can effectively prohibit carriers from providing services. So my question's actually to the applicant. As of today, are there services that are impeded by this?
Yes, there are. By, the word impeded, I'm not sure if that's, if I can answer that specifically. So what I can say is Verizon can and does have and can demonstrate a deficiency in capacity and they can show the demand on their network and they can show the trend of that demand into the future, you know, and the point at which it exceeds the capacity. You know, our, our clients learned a difficult lesson back like in 2008, 2009 when the iPhone came out and they were building for today's standards at that time. The iPhone came out, something changed technologically, data use went up, the devices quite honestly didn't work, they were intended to work for almost two years. Most people in the public don't realize this, but many network functions were turned off from the devices because the, the networks were laden with overcapacity issues. So they try to stay in front of that now. So they build for next year's. It takes a, a couple of years to develop a facility and just like if you were developing other infrastructure, you need to build it for tomorrow's needs as well as today's needs. So to answer your question, are there services that are impeded? Impeded would indicate that there is a, you know, an act of constriction or something to it. What I would say in answer to that is there is active demand on the network that is projected to exceed the capabilities of the network and these proposals are directly to address those needs of today and tomorrow.
Okay, so, because I just want to focus in a little bit. I think part of, part of the question is really, because you brought up 5G.
Yes.
So I feel like you're talking a lot more about expansion and maybe growth of the business or growth of the network. But as of today, it sounds like there are no services that are being prohibited.
Again, the, the terms that you're choosing, impeding and prohibited.
Well, they're actually terms that were given to us and you're the one who mentioned the expansion of 5G. So I, I didn't hear anything about right now.
For today and in the future, I can tell you today, there are demands on the network that are not met by the existing network infrastructure.
Okay, and those are, those are substantiated by?
Capacity demand charts. We've provided a coverage chart because your ordinance requires us to provide certain documents and deliverables as part of this process. If you would like to see if this is an item that would hinge your ability to, to, to meet the findings to approve the project, I would say, give us a continuance and I will come back with the capacity. back with the capacity demand chart to demonstrate to you that Verizon has capacity issues, and that's what these proposals are meant to address for today as well as the future.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair. I also wanted to talk to fellow cancer survivors. Unfortunately, one of the ladies is gone. I understand exactly what she was talking about. I had the same treatment less than two years ago, and I understand the fear about radiation. I'm concerned that possibly the explanations given by the expert did not come through as crystal clear for people who aren't familiar with radiation. The type of radiation we're talking about here is extremely different. The level of energies imparted is several orders of, thousands of times lower than the radiation we're talking about when we talk about cancer. There was a distinction that was made between ionizing radiation, which is the ones that causes your cells to break down. This is very, very different. It's radiation in perhaps more in the sense that your hot toaster is radiating heat, if you see what I mean. It's emissions, but they're not the same form of radiation. And if our expert would like to talk a little bit more about that to clarify for people, I would appreciate it.
So just to give you a little bit more about my background, I'm also the senior vice president, chairman of the Board of the National Council on Radio Protection and Measurements, and chairman of the Advisory Council on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection. So we, that organization, like the National Academy of Sciences, is chartered by Congress to provide guidance to the federal agencies on the health and safety of both ionizing radiation, like X-rays that you were referring to, which we use for both imaging studies, like when you go get an X-ray or a CT scheme, and for non-ionizing radiation, which is the kind of radiation that is comprised of radio waves and visible light that we use for telecommunications and that our eyes are sensitive to. So the interesting thing about it is that this radiation is the same form of energy, but the amount of energy contained in the wave is extraordinarily different, and the interactions that it has when it interacts with the bodies are extremely different. So the reason we call it ionizing and non-ionizing is because, I don't know, if you can think back to early days of chemistry, and one of the things they tried to teach you was that all of chemistry has to do with the relationship between how many electrons on the outer shell of the atom. And if you change the number of electrons on the outer shell, you change the chemistry between those two atoms. And when you change the chemistry, you change the nature of the molecule, and if you change the nature of the molecule, you change the nature of its ability to do its biological function. Well, ionization means that the energy has enough power to strip an electron from an atom, which changes its chemistry, which can change the atom, change the molecule, change its ability to do its biological function. And that's the genesis of the damage that ionizing radiation can do. And this is especially true when the molecule in question might be part of our DNA, to cause damage to the systems and cells in our body that produce all of our metabolic activity and regulate all of our cell growth and division. Non-ionizing radiation does not have anywhere near amount of energy to rip electrons off of atoms. And visible light comes the closest, and the separation between ionizing and non-ionizing occurs in the far ultraviolet region. And you know that some people are concerned about ultraviolet tanning beds. Well, just beyond that level for the tanning bed, beyond the far ultraviolet part of the spectrum, is a region of soft X-rays. And that is a threshold of ionization, where enough energy is being delivered to atoms to rip electrons off and cause ionization. But the stuff we use in diagnostic imaging to make CT scans and diagnostic studies is 100 times greater than that, and 1,000 times greater than that between that and CT scans. The stuff we use in radiation therapy to treat cancer is yet 100 or 1,000 times greater than that in energy, because we're trying to deliver the energy deep into the tissues of the tumor. On the other side, at about a billion times less in energy is the radio wave, which is impossible for it to remove an electron from an atom. So it cannot produce the same kind of biological effect that X-rays do. They share the word radiation, which I think is part of the problem, and people don't make that distinction, which I tried to explain earlier. They just hear the word blah, 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 radiation, and the rest of it just goes out the window, and they hear radiation and cancer, and they put the two together, and they think it's all the same thing, but of course it is not. So as I said earlier, if I was inventing the light bulb and I said, I brought this new technology to you, it's called visible electromagnetic radiation, people might have a problem with it if they thought about radiation the way they think about it today. But because we're all familiar with visible electromagnetic radiation, even though it's of higher energy than radio waves, we don't have the same reaction. So I've tried to paint a picture of this difference. Hopefully that was, gave some help.
Thank you very much. Through the chair?
Yes.
While we have you there, as we're down on the radio frequency end of this thing, you had mentioned earlier that the radio frequencies, or maybe, I'm sorry, it was you, the radio frequencies from the phone that we hold in our hands is higher when we're not getting great reception.
Right.
How does the radio frequency that we receive when we're holding it in our hands and putting it to our heads compare to what a resident might experience while they're at their home, next to a tower or a small cell like this?
So, I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you asking, so the first thing I was talking about is when you have poor reception, the cell site will tell your phone to turn up to full power.
Yes.
And when you have like a cell site nearby, it will tell your phone to turn down to its lowest power.
Yes.
And the difference in your exposure when you're using your phone can be as much as a thousand to one.
Okay. And how does that compare, though, for the folks who would be living next to this small cell, the RF that they're receiving?
Oh, from the tower itself?
Yes, comparatively, the phone versus the tower.
Yeah, there's no, so the, yeah, so the amount of exposure from the phone?
Yes.
It would be approximately 1,000 times greater than the exposure that they're receiving in their home from the small cell, if they live at the exact location where it's the highest on the ground level.
Okay, thank you.
And the reason is this inverse square law relationship, because it's so much closer when you're holding it. So, yeah, there's more power of being delivered to the small cell, but it's much further away, and it's a directional antenna that is sending its energy out towards the horizon. Very little of it is going directly down. If you think about that picture, that idea of a searchlight, you know? If you've ever spent at a lighthouse at night with no other ambient lighting, you can see the searchlight illuminate the horizon, and you can't even see your hand in front of your face. And that's because all this photonic energy is directed out in this direction, and very little of it is headed down. It's the same concept, only with radio waves instead of visible light.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
I would agree. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none? Okay. Well, I will entertain.
Well, I actually do have a comment.
Okay, please, go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Are we in discussion? We're in discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, I have to stop and think for a second. I wanted just to make a comment for all the people who spoke, and first to say thank you for speaking and speaking your mind and expressing your concern. As a planning commissioner, I don't take this job lightly. I learn a lot from each person that brings knowledge and valuable information to the table. It's real important to me to hear the comments. I can't possibly be an expert in all areas. And so as a planning commissioner, my responsibility is to do my homework, to read my packets, to do everything I possibly can to be informed. But it's impossible to be an expert in all the areas. And I don't take lightly when someone says to me, and says, looks me straight in the eye and says, it's about human beings, it's about our life savings, it's about our health. That, you know, that's deep for me to have to feel that and realize the responsibility. So hearing from you is important. In order for me to make the intelligent decisions that I need to make at this table, is to get as much information as I can, rely on the experts. I thought that you were a PhD doctor, but not a medical doctor. I was really happy to hear that you were a medical doctor. Additionally, is I have to have facts. I, when I sit at this commission, I might, I read my report, and I try very hard to be objective. I try very hard to make a decision that's in the best interest of our community, that has nothing to do about me. And in that process, I need to have facts, so when someone comes up and makes the presentation, and I know that, I can't always experience what you experienced, and I was, you know, quite touched by the fact that one of my commissioners, my colleagues, has experienced this process with a horrible disease, this cancer, I can't speak to that. All I can do is listen to it, and I can't walk those shoes. I can walk other shoes, but I can't walk those shoes. However, I cannot make a decision at this table, an emotional decision. I've got to base it on information, facts, knowledge, and reports that come through. So I need the public to know what's important to me is to hear and bring information. You can bring your stories, but bottom line, my job at this table is to base it on facts, reports, and information. And your, the stories touch my heart, but I have to make a decision based on facts. And that's what will make change, and that's why it's important to come to this table with information that allows me to be as informed and as knowledgeable, so that I can sit back here and say, I made the right decision. My job is to make the best decision for my community. And so in doing so, I find, you know, we've been doing cell towers for a lot of years, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, 15, 20 years, maybe even longer. And in the very beginning, we had those same questions, and I think that we don't want a rubber stamp, and because we have the information, it may look like we're just letting something go, but we are informed, and we've been doing it, I've been on the commission for more than 25 years. And so I don't want to take it lightly any longer, you know, those questions are important. I think that in the presentation that our applicants make or presenters make is to touch upon those areas, because when we're doing it every day, it can seem like it's not quite as important. But those reports, when you talk about the atoms and the molecules and all those pieces, I got a good science lesson today, and we don't always remember. And I hope that our audience today, at home audience, as well as our audience here, felt like, did they get more information? Are you more satisfied? Maybe you're not happy with the outcome, but are you more informed? Do you feel safer? Do you feel better? I don't know that. But those are the things that make a difference in my decision-making. So I want to urge my presentation to be sure that those things are touched upon. Not often any longer do we get people to have a large audience on cell sites. And we probably will not get many millennials to be here, for sure, because they're not going to want to have their technology lessened anymore, and are they as informed? Probably not. So it's important to continue to come, inform us, let us know the details and how you feel. And for that, I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just make a quick comment. I don't know how long I've been on the commission, maybe 16, 17 years, 18 years. And when the cell sites first came up, as Commissioner Johnson said, we all had questions, but never did we get an explanation, at least that I can remember, as detailed as we received tonight from Verizon's agents.
That's right.
It was very informative, and I would have to second what Commissioner Johnson said. I hope everybody, while you might not agree with it, hopefully you'll understand, you know, better what, you know, what we're dealing with. So, thank you for giving a very good presentation, and thanks for the public for, you know, voicing their comments and their concerns, and hopefully, you know, everybody will come out winners here. I don't know. Anyway, so at this point, did I already close public comment? I hope I did.
Yes.
Okay, great. So it's back to the commission chair for, we've had questions, we've had comments. I suppose now we're probably in line for, if somebody would want to, make a motion. Can the chair make a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, in that case, I will make a motion that we approve Use Permit 17-025 Based on Findings of Fact 1 through 6 and Subject to Conditions Approval 1 through 19, but I do believe 14 should be stricken from...
That's correct.
Okay. So there is a motion.
A second.
And a second.
Right, we'll call a roll.
Pardon me?
I'll call the roll.
That's right, it's a roll call.
Chair Chase?
Excuse me, does it have to be a roll call?
Yeah.
It should be in this case, I think.
Okay, aye.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassadi? Commissioner Legasse?
I abstain.
Commissioner Lethan?
I also abstain.
Commissioner Martin Mason?
No.
Right. So by my count, we have, let's just make sure we got this correctly here. We have Chair Chase who voted yes, we have Commissioner Johnson who voted yes, so that's two yes votes. We have two abstentions. Excuse me, Commissioner Biassadi voted yes, that's three. We have abstentions by Commissioner Legasse and Commissioner Lethan, and we have a no vote by Commissioner Martin Mason. And while we don't have a situation very often where this occurs, the abstentions go with the majority, there's a majority of three, the motion passes, and this action is appealable to the city council within 10 days.
Thank you. And thank you. Okay.
So if I may, thank you for your question. We are running, as you can see, about three hours past the start time, and the commission may wish to take a short break, because we do have another item on the agenda. So if it's with the permission of the chair, maybe we can take about a five-minute break and use the restroom, and you can ask your question.
Perhaps we can take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Five minutes, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Live again? All right, here we go. So we have one more item on this evening's agenda, if I'm not mistaken, which is a presentation from Architecture on the Proposed San Bruno Rec and Aquatic Center Park.
And before we do that, Commissioner Chase, I did note that there is an Item C that was scheduled for a public hearing. This was 111 San Bruno Avenue, and the agenda reflects that the applicant requested a continuance for that. And in talking with staff this morning, they do support the request and requested that the matter be continued to a date certain of July 17. So I think we would entertain a motion to that effect.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I did skip right over that.
Through the chair, I'll make such a motion.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing done?
All right, that passes, and now we're up for the presentation. All right, it passes and now we're up for the presentation.
Okay. Let's see, are we on here? Good? Okay, good evening, Chair, members of the commission. I'm Dawn Marcus with Group Four Architecture, Research and Planning, and I'm here to give you an update on the conceptual design for the new San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Center. We will move quickly through the slides in deference of your time and happy to go back and elaborate on anything that I covered too quickly for you in the detail that you wish. So basically, going to give you an update on our project schedule, update on the current floor plans for the proposed facility, and feedback on the conceptual design options, input that we've received from the public, and direction that we're using to develop the conceptual design, and to update you with the current design strategies that we'll be presenting next week to the city council, and a summary of next steps. So where we're at right now is at the very tail end of the conceptual design phase of the project. Next week, on the 26th, is when we'll be presenting the conceptual design to the city council for their acceptance. It has been a busy process for the last five months from advisory committee meetings last one we had, last week, to stakeholders and technical meetings, a lot of different technical meetings conducted with building, planning, fire, park and recreation. Many had multiple meetings as well as the public meetings and community input. Our last round of outreach that we had was actually at the Community Days in addition to the outreach survey that's been online and had a great attendance and participation at Community Days. To date, over 1,700 residents have given us their input on the two rounds of outreach that we've conducted. Very engaged community, very excited, and lots of great direction and input from them. Round two had almost 600 participants per the community. And you see Community Days itself, I think we had over 200, almost 300. In terms of outreach summary, the direction that we've gotten from the community in terms of exterior materials, strong preference for wood, for the, let's see, I need to bring my glasses for distance here next time, sorry about that, I don't want to get it wrong, for terracotta and masonry, and that was followed by stone, tile, and metal. As we look at the landscape features, we had community gathering spaces well represented from the community, interactive amenities, integrated landforms, flexible lawn spaces, and seating and furniture, all kind of grouped right there together, then followed by public art. These are all directions that we'll continue to take inspiration from as we develop this conceptual design and move into schematic design. The recommended building program is really still this balanced program that you had seen the last time we gave you an update. And that includes a lobby, gymnasium, fitness and wellness spaces, aquatics, a community hall, classroom, conference room space, art room, game room, and early childhood recreation space. Really a facility that will serve all generations and all different aspects of community, recreation, and aquatics. The site plan, if you recall, from the first round of outreach, when we were looking at the site on within City Park about where to locate the building, was the hill scheme, new hill scheme, basically located where the existing recreation center is, integrated into one facility with recreation, aquatics, and community center, and thus leaving where the existing aquatic center is open so that it can be returned to parkland. In addition to having the new facility, we will be reworking the street and dividing the parking lot from the street from your creek and really making it much more safe as well as improving the streets, the parking lot, and the creek. As we look at the first floor plan, it's really divided itself very nicely and it's really driven from functionality but is working extremely well as we develop it into the architecture and to the aesthetic. We basically have three areas that we're looking at, and we have the community center here in green, we have recreation in the middle, then we have aquatics over here on the left side. Our main entry is located right here with a service point located right directly across that with excellent visual connection throughout the facility, and then a potential second or seasonal entrance located over here for aquatics. And I won't dive too much into the interior, focus a little bit more on parking in just a minute. Second floor, we have a community hall above the community center on the first floor with an outdoor patio, and then we have recreation in the middle with art room and fitness room, group exercise room. We are looking at potential add alternate for a track that would go around mezzanine level on the gymnasium. So it's most important, as we look at parking, wanting to give you an update on where we're at with our parking as we look at the entire park. Here is a summary of your existing parking. At the recreation center and City Parkway, there's currently 73 spaces. The pool parking lot, which is to what I would call the south side of the site by the church, there's 69 spaces. Looking towards the east side of the site, over by the courtyard and the ball fields, there's 33 spaces. And the way up at Beckner's Picnic Shelter, 11 spaces. So onsite, there's a total of 186. Other spaces that are used for overflow and overflow and peak use events such as like Community Days is the senior center site up here, which is 139, as well as 35 spaces on Crystal Springs. So looking at our site plan, we basically have the proposed parking directly adjacent that's going to be improved as part of the project, directly adjacent to the existing rec center. The second area that we'll talk about is over at the playground, the courtyard area located here to the east. And then in the south is the pool parking lot located across the way here adjacent to the church. So zooming in on the site plan for the parking strategy in Zone One, we will be looking at replacing the existing parking lot, improving it, providing ADA services access and parking, and separating it away from the roadway so it won't be people backing out into the oncoming traffic. You'll be able to come in, drop off, park, circulate back out. With this improved lot, we're able to get 71 spaces, so that's a loss of two spaces that's currently there. The other area that we're looking at providing improved parking at is in the courtyard, ball fields area down by the playground. As we look at that site, there's existing 33 spaces. And just by coming in and being very diligent and providing double-loaded access in the parking lot down here, we have met with Park and Recreation as well as Public Works to make sure that we have access to their pump station and access ingress and egress out of the courtyard. Significant addition of spaces down here, existing is 33 spaces, we're able to increase that to 89 spaces for 56 additional spaces. So without taking away any parkland and basically not even really increasing hardscape, just better use of it, we're able to get significant increase down there. As we look over at Zone Three, which is the lot to the south over by the church, currently there is 69 spaces. As potentially a future option, expanding out just 35 feet allows us to do two double-loaded perpendicular parking aisles, and that could be an increase to 105 spaces, a gain of 36 spaces. Or if you were to expand and take over the entire area that is sometimes used for overflow parking on the grass there, that's a potential gain of 81 spaces. Now, this is not city-owned land. The other two locations were. The city manager's office has met with the church and started preliminary discussions on potential joint use or partnership for this property, but no definite plans have been made. It's very much in the early stages of discussion. So as we look at the parking need, what we currently have onsite is 171 to 180 spaces, and that is based on, the 171 is based on the city's current parking standard for the recreation facility as it's proposed. Just wanting to do due diligence and double-check that, we use an ITE number that we're using on other similar projects, which recommends 3.2 spaces per thousand, which would result in a parking demand of 180 spaces for the proposed facility. As part of the SECA process and the RFP that the city is about to put out for this project, including in that is a parking analysis. And so these are just all preliminary numbers to give you an idea of what we may be able to aim for right now in conceptual design. This will all come back to you in schematic design. But just based on Zone One and Zone Two, keeping Zone Three as it is, that would result in 229 spaces. And again, remember though, these numbers do not include park uses because there is no city ordinance for that right now. And that's one of the reasons we think it's important to do that parking study. As we look at the median count, which includes Zone One, Zone Two, and improvements to the pool parking lot, we can get up to 265 spaces. And if we were to do all the improvements, which is the high number, 359 spaces, which at the highest level is a gain of 184 spaces. These are all scenarios right now, just letting you be informed of where we might be heading in the next phase of the project. So basically, the two options that we took to the community for their inputs was option A, the park pavilions, which is really looking at still building in this arc form where the existing facility is, but really trying to break down the mass of the somewhat linear building into these three pavilions. And the pavilions really relate to the function, as I mentioned before, the community center, the recreation center, and the aquatics. And the second option was the park arc. Should I ask if anybody on the commission voted? You participated? Great, excellent. The park arc was more trying to celebrate the opening up of the building, focusing more on the park and just trying to streamline the building and open up to the great lawn as you see it. The community input on this was about two to one in favor of the pavilions over the park arc. But I won't even try to read this tonight, but I will say the one that you should read is the commented red on the bottom here. It was, you know, as if someone in our office wrote this comment from the community, which was really what we want to do is, you know, hybrid of the two. They both have really good qualities, and ideally what we'd like to see is a hybrid of the two schemes, one that does integration of indoors and outdoors and opens up to the park, but also celebrates the arc. And so the recommended option, which is the park pavilion hybrid, we're calling it, kind of merging the two together, is looking at, as we look at the park pavilion, how can we simplify these roofs? How can we make these roofs over the aquatics be more responsive to photovoltaics and be more effective as we're trying to potentially become net zero energy in this facility with the use of photovoltaics? As we're looking at the architecture, how can we look at that vocabulary and the facade and the opening and really create a nice rhythm along there? And how can we use the materiality to really kind of create the story of the pavilions as we move along there? And so what that's resulted in is kind of the updated conceptual design that we're showing right here. And this is simplifying the roofs on the aquatics, still using that arch form, if you will, in the roof just because it's a really nice form. This may still evolve as we move into schematic design. As you know, architecture is kind of very iterative and it's all a process, but right now, looking at a nice form over the aquatics that kind of goes to this winged roof as we look at recreation. And then as we get down to the community hall, as you might see it as you enter on City Parkway with the balcony there, just coming back to the simple roof form again, but oriented in a different way than the aquatics facility portion. And then this image is looking at the building if we were standing just slightly in front of where the current aquatics facility is. And so you can see how the rhythm of the building highlights the pavilions. It's still cohesive, but it creates a nice rhythm between the massing, so it's not this big solid massing. And so that's the update for the conceptual design. I hope I didn't go quite too fast. And then just a summary of where we'll be going in next steps. City council next week, and then hopefully marching right off into schematic design and trying to get the new facility underway. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
Well, great presentation. You really were patient to wait till the very end and you did a great presentation. You didn't feel rushed.
No.
So it was good. I really support the increased parking. I mean, that's a key factor in this whole attending the community meetings and the discussions. That was so important. On the refined option, let's see if I see a page in the book, I think it's 26. It seems, it almost looks like it's the same lines as the building that's existing there now.
Oh, yeah. If, I don't know if the site plan actually shows where it's, we're showing for a while. Let's see, a dash.
It's 26.
Well, does it, this one, so the existing building, actually, we are expanding out. So the existing building is like this little square within here. So we're expanding this one, we're expanding that way.
I'm just looking at the arch.
Oh, the groin vault. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It has almost the same look. Just interesting.
Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair?
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay. I also want to say that I appreciate the looking at more parking. I think that as the rec center is improved, I think it's going to get a lot more traffic from the front. I think it's going to get more traffic both from our residents but also probably more people outside of San Bruno. And I think that, yeah, with the different programming that we're going to be having, it makes a lot of sense. So thank you for that. I think both of them are beautiful. I like that you're trying to combine the two into a refined option. One thing I was thinking about while I was driving down Crystal Springs today and I looked over, I was considering this as I was driving down and looking down on the roof of the existing building, and I thought, oh gosh, I really hope that it's attractive from the top, which I look, yeah, I don't know, I'm looking at the roof line on the refined option and I kind of go, ah. So, and it also made me ask the question whether or not there'll be any like roof patios or any usable space on the roof and whether that would be...
So I'll address the view from Crystal Springs Avenue first. So the view from Crystal Springs Avenue, actually what we're looking at is clear stories on the gym on the north side so that you would actually be able to see the light and glow that's happening on inside of the gym as you're going down Crystal Springs Avenue, just because that's really great daylighting to have in a building because we don't have to shade it and things like that. But you will be able to see that glow from the building as you're coming down Crystal Springs Avenue. We actually have a model that you can drive or fly through as we're looking at it. And the attractiveness, you can't see it here, but there's actually a skylight on the roof. We are looking at the majority of the roof for photovoltaic spaces, especially the shaded roof that you see here. The patio that we're looking at is more on the second floor, not a roof patio, just because that creates a whole level of access, security, and everything. But we have two patios, one over here off the community hall, looking out into the park that'll feel very much treehouse-like because of the trees across the street, as well as a patio right here off of the dance and fitness studio, the group X room right there, which then will look over this entry. And we've got this lovely outdoor plaza that has these steps, kind of outdoor amphitheater effect that's at that second entry.
Also, I love, it's really dramatic, the eucalyptus trees back behind there, and I'm pleased that there'll be a window in the gymnasium to observe that because I think it really gives it a nice sense of space. Will that also be included in other... Will that also be included in, in other, other rooms that are adjacent?
Along the backside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the aquatics, so you'll see right here, we'll probably do the same kind of clear story windows on this backside of the aquatics. This lower roof area here, the aquatics is like a two-story volume space in the nadatorium, and the space around here is single-story. So yes, you definitely will be able to see across the single-story to the two-story volume at the nadatorium, and we'd have windows back there for the balanced light as well. We are using that second floor concealed within these little pockets between our kind of feature roofs will be the mechanical units, that will be well-screened, accessible from the second floor, so very practical, but those niches really create great distribution for the building, very efficient, being able to go into the gym, being able to go into the nadatorium, and the community hall.
Was any consideration given to redoing the parking at the, I guess it's the west end where the Beckner Shelter is? You know, past the church and down the end of that road?
Yeah, I know where it is, yeah. Yeah, there was even suggestions that we redo the road and try and fill all, fill all the potholes, but just for Scope Creek, we're, we're trying to focus on the Recreation Aquatic Center and not the overall park master plan improvements, which would increase the budget significantly more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment through the chair, I did attend the last meeting, and I just wanted to thank you, I think that the meetings are being incredibly well facilitated. I see in the plans that you're taking into account all the public comment that's coming in here, it's really a, a community effort, and I really want to thank you guys for it, it's been a great job.
Thank you, it's been a lot of fun. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, that was very good.
Thank you.
And that will conclude that presentation. Now we will go on to the very last item on the agenda for tonight. City staff discussion.
Well, I think I've done plenty of discussion for tonight, so I think the only issue on the agenda is selecting the members for the next ARC meeting.
I'll volunteer.
Commissioner Legasse, okay, anybody else?
I won't be able to do it this time.
What's the day, the next meeting, I'm sorry? Let me look at my calendar.
July 12.
I can attend.
All right.
I can attend if you need a third.
And yes?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Okay, so that I just...
Is this a good time to request information in a future meeting?
Yeah.
I gave away my, my agenda, so.
Sure.
Tonight I would have really liked to have been more prepared on the issue of cell phone towers and what we're allowed to do, and what our guidance is. In particular, I'm used to most projects, you don't parcel them out, you, you look at them cumulatively, and in the case of, we are limited by federal regulation on here, we're going to see cell tower after cell tower. I would really like to have an overview at a future meeting from the global perspective, and maybe even dots on the maps of areas where cell phone coverage will, is requested by, by an applicant.
So thank you, I can provide a little bit of background on that, because I actually was involved in some of the meetings with both of the carriers that were represented here this evening, and certainly if staff has any comments about it, I would ask them to, to chime in as well. I think the short answer to that is, is yes, and that is that staff understands that we, we don't want to piecemeal these, we want to see what they look like from a global perspective. In these, both of these situations, the carriers were not ready to proceed with all of their applications, so they just selected one and said, let's, let's present those, let's go with those. Those were the ones that had been pending for the longest time, there were deadlines that were coming up, and so the reason why you saw those two tonight wasn't because they were randomly selected or, or because we, the staff didn't want to present other ones to you, it was because they were the ones that needed to go forward tonight, selected by the, the carriers for action, so that they could get an idea of what, what is the planning commission's reaction to it. So I think going forward, we'll certainly talk with staff, and I know that our, our planning department will pass along your request to, you know, to the community development director and discuss how to bring these forward in a more integrated and logical manner. And I know Commissioner Martin Mason also had a suggestion that I, that I thought was well-taken, which was that, if possible, that those come in, a carrier at a time, instead of, you know, one, two, or three carriers on the same agenda, so that you can sort of feature that integrated look at what is this particular carrier doing in, in the community. So we'll certainly look at those things and, and pass your request on to staff.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Yeah, through the chair. This, this lady asked a question or two, so if staff could answer that before she go, we go home this evening, it would be appreciated. It was more of a staff question than something for the commission, so after we adjourn, if you'd take a couple of minutes to speak with her, that would be really great.
I'm sorry for retaining you, but...
No, no, after we're done, ma'am. We're going to adjourn the meeting now, and then you can ask staff your question.
Which is going to be really soon.
Can I?
Now you may ask your question.